Recording in progress.
Hey, everybody. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, October 29, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Margaret, would you please call a roll?
Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Prevotelli.
Here.
Commissioner Radby.
Here.
Commissioner Sade. Commissioner Summers. Chair Hafeman.
Here.
We have a quorum this evening, and Commissioner Summers actually has an excuse absence this evening.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Mercado is walking in as we speak.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now to the order of the agenda. Are there any commissioners that would like to request changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, next, we'll move the meeting procedures. The City of San Rafael remains committed for all to participate in our public meetings. I want to welcome all that are making the time this evening to participate. Margaret, would you please tell us how public comment will work this evening?
Yes, Chair Hafeman. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live on YouTube. Viewers can also watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda or by dialing 669-444-9171, and then entering the meeting ID, which is 840-9897-7308, and then pound. We are offering closed captioning this evening through Zoom. If you are watching through Zoom, select the Live Transcript button to enable this feature. If you do experience any technical difficulties, please email me, margaret.cavanaugh-lynch@cityofsanrafel.org, and I am able to see emails and I can assist as possible through the meeting. In order to provide oral testimony, speakers must be present. Displayed on the podium is a timer to help you stay within the allotted timeframe. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if outside of the City of San Rafael. If you'd like to request an accommodation under the American with Disabilities Act to provide public comment virtually, please submit your request to the Planning Manager's Office 72 hours in advance of the meeting, again to my address, my email address for communication.
Thank you, Margaret. Next on the agenda is oral communication from the public. Remarks on non-agenda items are welcome at this time and may be on anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Please know that remarks on agenda items will be heard at the time the item is discussed. Can we have a show of hands? How many people would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see no hands. And I see that there are no... So, Margaret, do I need to open and close?
If there's no one to speak before any item not on the agenda, then we can move on to the next item, and I don't see any other people participating.
Great. I see that there are no items under the consent... Pardon me?
Yeah.
Oh, there's one hand. Ah. You'd like to speak not on Northgate Mall, on something that's not on the agenda? I'm sorry, you would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda?
We may have someone who may be hearing impaired.
Are you speaking about the Northgate Mall?
For the microphone, may I speak?
Are you wanting to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight?
Yes, yes. We're looking at the World Series, California coastal community. We're now looking at the United States. We're looking to see if we have veterans coming back from foreign countries. Do we have anybody literature about the Oakland Athletics? In San Rafael, we have garbage men now looking at the United States and the union representing their pay scales. Now that we like to talk about these brick projects with bricks and mortar, is there anybody willing to join the union and represent the union in New York as well as Chicago to see about baseball players who don't want to leave the West Coast? They don't want to go to Sacramento. We just want to work with the garbage company. To keep these garbage men working together, last night I had to come and see if there's a translator available. And the truck numbers now look a little bit suspicious to me in California, that the truck numbers, number 95, number 145, these trucks have been hand painted now, so it looks a little bit of custom work, I mean, necessary in the state of California to protect American veterans who need to check to see, is this garbage company in San Rafael really going to keep the city streets clean and safe as is needed to recognize? That baseball is a game where nine men will play together. So if nine men are playing together, how many people are willing to keep these city seats safe for free in the state of California? Is there any translations needed in Portuguese for the technical expertise? I'm Joe Ryan McCarthy-Harrell. I'm just here to see if the APA has been represented today in the union for pay scales in garbage and waste management. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I see that there are no items under the consent calendar this evening. Again, this is, you're speaking on something other than the Northgate Mall?
She had her.
Okay. Apologize if I didn't see your hand up.
My name is Rose. I'm a resident of 19 years, and I'm a neighbor to Northgate Mall.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. This is the comment period for items that are not on the agenda tonight.
I'm getting to it.
Okay.
Okay. I want to know how these changes in Northgate Mall are going to affect...
Ma'am, there will be an opportunity to comment about Northgate Mall a little bit later on in the meeting?
Talking about Contempo Marin, not Northgate Mall. If you would let me speak, I would explain.
Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
Your apology is accepted, but I don't like your intimidating and non-listening manner.
I apologize again.
Contempo Marin, maybe some of you don't know, is a large neighborhood directly across the highway. So 101 divides us, but it doesn't have to. I want to know how Contempo Marin, McGuinness, and mostly apartment dwellers on Deer, Villa, whatever that is, across Smith Ranch, and how Smith Ranch is going to be affected. I haven't seen anything about that. And it doesn't pertain to Northgate Mall per se. But we're going to be affected by traffic, by all kinds of stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, so we have, are there any other hands? Okay, so we have one item on the agenda this evening, and that is 5800 Northgate Drive, the Northgate Town Square Project. Let me take a moment to explain how this item will be discussed this evening. We'll start by receiving a report from staff, then I will ask the Planning Commission if they have any questions regarding the report. These should be only a clarifying style of questions that they need to have immediately to move forward. Otherwise, I will ask the commissioners to hold their questions until after the public comment period. Next, we will receive a presentation from the development team. This will be approximately 20 minutes long. At conclusion, I will again ask the Planning Commission if they have any immediate questions or if they're okay waiting until a bit later. Then we'll open the public comment period. The total number of people who wish to speak will inform the time we are able to offer each person. For example, if we have 20 speakers, each can have three minutes. If we have more than 20 but less than 30, it will be two minutes. And finally, if more than 30, we will have to reduce the time to 1.5 minutes per person. A few other rules to know. One speaker cannot cede their time to another speaker. Each person may speak one time only. And remember, you don't need to repeat previous comments, but it can instead indicate that you agree with the previous speakers. Okay, can I have a show of hands of people who intend to comment on this item tonight?
Around 20?
Okay, we saw what looked like a little bit less than 20 hands, so we're going to go with three minutes per speaker tonight. Please know that we are following these rules so we can hear from as many people as possible this evening. After all have spoken, we will close the public hearing and take the project back for deliberation by the Planning Commission. Mica, would you please begin the presentation?
Good evening, Planning Commission Chair and Commissioners. My name is Mica Hinkle. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director, and I'll kick it off here for the staff team. The team is actually very large tonight, and that's really reflective of the amount of work and put into the documents that are contained here. And I do appreciate all the efforts to get it here. So gratitude, really, for this team to help get it to this phase. This is a long project coming that San Rafael has been evaluating, looking for really what is the next chapter of the Northgate Mall. So I am excited with the developments, applicants, and the process we've made to get to here, so you have this for you tonight. I do want to actually call out my name, the team that really has been pivotal in review of this project and putting together the package and information. So April Miller, Public Works Director, Joanna Quoc, Sarah Tiplinski from the Public Works Team, Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch, our Planning Manager, April Tally, our Project Manager, Heather Hines from the M Group, our Planning Consultant, Teresa Wallace from the LSA Group, who did the environmental review, David Prese from our Traffic Consulting Team, and our legal team, Mary Wagner, Gera Doherty, and Ed Schaefer, who's on, joining us online. Their help and guidance in this has been significant, and it really is a lift. It really is something for us as we evaluate this project, to be grateful for their time and effort in this, along with applicant team and the community. The amount of community input on this project has been significant, and really, it does reflect, really, the values and care of this community on the project and what happens in the built environment. So with that, I'm happy to turn the presentation over to Heather Hines. We'll start from there. So staff's obviously available for questions as they arise. We are building upon the multiple community meetings that we've had before, so there'll be overviews, but not going into significant project details like we did last month at our work session. So thank you.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Heather Hines with M Group. Thank you for having us this evening to talk about the project. And different from the last time we were here, this is actually, there is an action before you. So last time, we said, more times than I can remember, this is not an action item. Tonight, we are before you with an action item. So I'm going to give a presentation outlining some of the details of the project and the entitlements handed over to Teresa to talk about the environmental. So, next slide, please. So I guess I don't need to do this again, but I just want to kind of emphasize also Mica's point. There has been a collaboration getting the project to this point, so there has been a robust team of city representations from a number of different departments, as well as the city's consultant team. And we are here this evening to answer questions and provide clarifications as helpful for your deliberations. Next slide. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the project entitlements and the associated environmental impact report for the project. There are three resolutions before the Planning Commission this evening. The first, a resolution recommending city council certification of the final environmental impact report, adoption of findings of facts, and overriding considerations, and the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program that goes hand in hand with that environmental analysis. Second resolution is recommending city council adoption of a zoning amendment. And the third resolution before you this evening is a resolution recommending city council approval of the project entitlements. For this project, the city council is the decision-making body on all of the entitlements for the project. Next slide. So just on those requested entitlements, a little bit of, I'll go through these one at a time with a little more detail, but this is hopefully familiar from the last time we were here. Zoning amendment to rezone the property to PD, a Northgate Plan Development Zoning District, a vesting tentative subdivision map to divide the property known as Northgate Mall, just under 45 acres, a master use permit to govern the uses that would be on the site, environmental and design review for the development of, that's architectural, that's site design and landscape and lighting and fencing, all of those pieces, and a master sign program for the sign approach for the entire center. In addition, the city council will be considering an affordable housing agreement, as well as a public access use and maintenance agreement. And we will touch on these as part of today's presentation, and they were talked about as part of your staff report, but those are not in your packet this evening, but will be part of the project entitlements when it does go forward to the city council. Next slide, please. So as Mica said, I want to, not spending a whole lot of time on the project description because we did talk about this in some length in September when we were here for a study session, but I do want to touch on project evolution. So there has been a number of meetings. This project was originally submitted in 2021. There has been a number of Planning Commission meetings, a number of Design Review Board meetings, and a number of revisions that have happened in response to those meetings, as well as in response to comments from the public through some of the outreach that the applicant has done. The most recent revised plans were submitted in June of this year, and those are the plans that we presented at the study session in September. And to note, no changes have been made to those project plans since you reviewed them in September. Next slide, please. This is just a brief snapshot to show there have been a number of meetings, a number of revisions, and a number of meetings about the environmental analysis for this project since initial submittal in March of 2021, and taking us through to today. Next slide. To recap, the primary revisions that were made during the latest revision to the project and the project that is before the city for adoption, revisions to the town square to increase the size of the town square, to enhance the amenities of the town square. A significant change occurred with Residential 1, which previously was an affordable housing parcel with a single 96 units of affordable housing in a single multifamily building. That was changed. The Residential 1 is now 38 townhomes, and the 10% onsite inclusionary has been spread out throughout all of the residential parcels. So that was a pretty significant change. In doing so, Residential 5 expanded a little bit to have more units in that parcel, and as a result, also went up to a six-story building. So that was a change both in the use and in the massing of that building. Changes to the cinema building in direct response to feedback from the Design Review Board. There was a number of architectural refinements to the non-commercial or the non-residential and the residential components. And then two procedural aspects of that revised project include the withdrawal of the development agreement application and the formal submittal of the master sign program. Next slide. So what we have is still a multi-phase, two phases that make up this project, a 2025 master plan and a 2040 vision plan. So that has not changed, although some of the numbers associated with that have, and some of the configuration of the proposed project. Next slide. This is really highlighting overall demolition that's proposed throughout the two phases. So the blue in Phase 1 is shown to be retained, while the red is going to be demolished. And then as you move into Phase 2, the yellow are additional demolition that occurs, and mostly that is the Macy's and the Kohl's. So just really highlighting that evolution of the project. Next slide. And then in Phase 1, this is showing what components of the project are proposed as part of Phase 1, Residential 1, 2, 3, and 4. Of note, the town square is part of Phase 1, as well as the bike hub. Next slide, please. And this is really highlighting those open spaces and landscaping that are part of Phase 1. Similarly, for Phase 2, you'll see that in this one, Residential 5 and Residential 6 come into play as Macy's and Kohl's would be demolished. So this is syncing up with that demolition plan we saw. Some more of the pad buildings come online as part of Phase 2 as well. And then, next slide, in terms of the open space and landscaping, really, the... really, the most significant difference here is in that area between residential five and, I can't even see it from here, shop, I think it shops two open up, and you have another throughway through those two. Next slide. So Teresa Wallace with LSA is going to provide a more in-depth summary and presentation on the environmental review process in a few minutes. But I just wanted to emphasize that the environmental review is obviously a key component of this project, and certification of the project EIR would need to be the first action by the city in order to make a decision on the project and approval of the project. One of the big milestones that's happened since we were before you in September is the release of the final EIR, which included the response to comments, as well as the analysis of the revised project that we've been talking about in terms of any changes to impacts with those revisions to the project. Next slide. So I'm going to quickly run through the different entitlements in a little more detail, starting with the zoning amendment. This is the legislative action that is part of this project. The entitlement is to rezone the Northgate Mall property. So that's approximately 45 acres, going from general commercial to Northgate Town Square Plan Development. This is something that in your general plan, it does talk about doing PDs for developments of five acres or more, especially when there's cohesion that is better addressed through a PD to get the development, the desired development, and some of the flexibility when you're looking at a larger project. So as part of the zoning amendment, it is establishment of the Northgate Town Square PD District and associated standards that would govern anything that were to be any use or development on that part, those parcels. And then also, another component of the zoning amendment is that actual change in the land use map, or the zoning map, not the land use map, zoning map, to represent that change from general commercial to PD. Next slide. So touching briefly on the Northgate PD standards, you do have that in your packet. So as I mentioned, it's consistent with the land use policy 1.15, which encourages use of PD zoning for development of parcels greater than five acres. Also consistent with your municipal code section that governs PD zoning. The PD, there's many aspects that follow the GC zoning regulations, but there's a number of them that are a little bit different, one of which is allowing a transfer of standards across the sites within this district. So for instance, parking, for instance, density, it's not necessarily on each of the individual parcels, but it's throughout the 45 acres. Some differences in fencing provisions for the different uses that are proposed on the site. Your GC zoning doesn't have a minimum square footage for private usable open space for residential uses. So we built that in, carried that over from some of your higher-density residential zoning districts to make sure that there was a minimum 150 square feet for each residential unit. Similarly, with bicycle parking, pulling over some of those increased bicycle parking standards. The PD also outlines some parameters around temporary uses, and this was a consideration because the use of the town square for community events and as a public gathering space was a really important component of this project. So we wanted to make sure that there were certain provisions that allowed that to happen seamlessly and without undue impacts, but also without undue challenges or procedural procedural challenges that might get in the way. And then finally, the PD standards reference compliance with, again, that master affordable housing agreement and the public use, access use and maintenance agreement for those spaces. Next slide. So next entitlement is the vesting tentative subdivision map. So this would approve subdivision of the six existing lots into 24 new lots. And it would also provide for future subdivision for condo purposes on lots two, lots two and three, which correlate with residential one and two. So those 138 townhomes or condos in the future. You will see in the conditions associated with the vesting tentative map, there are provisions for extension of purple pipe to make sure there's recycled water on the site to use for irrigation and dual plumbing, an upsize of the trunk sewer line. There are requirements for transit stop improvements and implementation of onsite bicycle connectivity improvements, as well as requirements for hydrant placement and fire lanes throughout the site. So you'll see a variety of those pulled through in those conditions of approval related to the vesting tentative subdivision map. Next slide. The master use permit, this is also a requirement from your municipal code for phased multi-tenant development. It's really to cover the variety of uses that will be on the site, the residential, the commercial, as well as the public common spaces. Again, some of the things that stand out in the conditions related to the master use permit, references again to those temporary uses that are called out in the PD, but also referencing that if there is an event that doesn't meet those requirements, that the property owner or applicant can go through the temporary use permit process through the city for maybe a larger event. Includes condition for financial contribution to go towards the Marydale Path to connect the project with the smart station. There's provisions for high-volume drive-through tenants to make sure that those drive-throughs are designed appropriately if there are high users when the applicant secures tenants. There's provisions for the outdoor eating areas, a requirement around the retractable bollards between the bike hub and the town square, affordable housing provisions. And there is a provision that provides for the city to have the option to accept community spaces within the project, including a community center room, library, restroom facilities, and a police sub-office onsite. So those are some of the things that are in the conditions related to the master use permit to make sure a lot of those aspects of the project are being considered and working well together with all of the different activities on the site. Next slide. So one aspect in particular is the privately-owned publicly-accessible open space. So within the master use permit, it identifies that they're a part of the projects that even though they are privately owned, they are meant for public access. So there are specific conditions, and again, this will be as part of an agreement that the city will execute with the developer. Five areas that are specifically identified and conditioned include the town square, the bike hub, the restaurant entry plaza, and then two entry rest stop areas. And what it looks at is those areas, what are the improvements in those areas? And what are the triggers for those needing to be installed? As well as provisions for ongoing maintenance and public access. Next slide, please. Environmental and design review permit. This is really, as previously mentioned, this is approving the architectural design, the site design, landscape design, the fencing, the lighting. It touches on tree removal and protection, the refuse storage, the town square and public amenities. There are a few specific conditions that I'd like to point out. One requires additional landscaping adjacent to the drive-through lanes to really have an increased density between the drive-through lane and the public multi-use path along the frontage, the street frontage, to make sure there is adequate separation from that kind of auto-oriented use and the pet and bike use along the frontage that's so desired. Conditions about all-electric for all the new construction, except for commercial kitchens. And this does include the use of any sort of fire pit on the site that would not be allowed to be a gas fire pit. Requirements for rooftop solar and EV parking, as well as that purple pipe for landscaping and dual plumbing. Specifically calls out no faux turf in the town square. And then there's a number of fire prevention requirements that are in this section, in the conditions, to really make sure those are caught as we move into construction drawing should the project be approved. Next slide. Finally, master sign program. So this is a document establishing a uniform sign approach across the site. It includes provisions both for private tenant signs, as well as wayfinding signs within the project. It includes color palette and font styles and sign types. So it allows variation so that an individual tenant can have their branding, their unique look, but also enough controls so that it is a cohesive design where things are working together. And specific to this, I want to point out that condition number 163 is a condition that requires a change to a lower-profile monument sign from a pylon sign in the corner near the existing residential, adjacent residential areas. So a pylon sign was proposed, and that condition requires that they change that to a lower-profile monument sign to be more in keeping. Next slide. Almost done. Standards for review, just want to point out that the project was reviewed for compliance with a lot of different documents that the city has adopted, and those consistency matrices were included in your packet. In addition, findings related to those consistencies are outlined in the draft resolutions in the packet. Next slide. I've touched on conditions of approval in relationship to specific entitlements. There's more than 160 conditions proposed as part of this package. We've talked about a number of them. And I do want to note, there are two changes that we are proposing. The first is to condition of approval 92. To add at the end of that, I'm just going to read it, actually, just so it's in the record. So condition of approval 92 would read, "Completion of each POPA improvement shall occur prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy for development within the construction area. Example, onsite parcels or building sites located adjacent to such POPA improvements as depicted on the attached exhibit number II and described in condition number 91." The second modification that I would like to read into the record and we are proposing is to condition of approval 158 to read, "Consistent with SRMC Section 14.18.160.1I, Parking Lot Screening and Landscaping, Revised Plan shall show that the top level of parking structures utilizes light-colored, high-albedo paving materials reflective of at least 0.3, or utilize shade structures, photovoltaic carports, landscape trellises, or trees to achieve at least 50% daytime shading." Next slide, please. I am now going to turn it over to Teresa to talk about the environmental impact report.
Hey. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Again, I'm Teresa Wallace. I'm a principal with LSA, and we're the city's consultant for environmental review of the proposed project. So I'm going to go over the elements of the final EIR that is under consideration tonight, beginning with a bit of background on the overall environmental review process. So first, I just want to go over the basic requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, which is a state law. Generally, the ultimate purpose of SEQA is to inform the city's decision-makers, other agencies, and the general public about potential environmental consequences of project approval. Impacts are considered against baseline conditions in several topical areas and are considered to be significant when direct or indirect physical impacts would result. If environmental impacts are identified, then the lead agency needs to identify ways to mitigate or avoid those impacts to the extent feasible, and must also look at alternatives that can also avoid or reduce those impacts. Next slide. So this slide shows the overall timeline for environmental review, which began in 2021 with issuance of the NOP. After the draft EIR was released in January 2024, the city extended the public review period from 45 days to 60 days, and that ended in March. During that time, the Planning Commission also held a hearing to receive comments on the draft EIR. The city then prepared written responses to all comments received and prepared a response to comments document, or what's also called an RTC document, which I will go over in a moment. The draft EIR and the RTC document constitute the final EIR, which the Planning Commission is being asked tonight to consider. After tonight's hearing, the final EIR will be considered by the city council. Next slide. So I'm going to go over the draft EIR findings in the next few slides, and then I will present the findings of the final EIR. As shown here, the draft EIR found that most potential impacts of the project would either be less than significant, or result in no impact, or that potential impacts could be reduced or avoided to below established thresholds with the implementation of identified mitigation measures. Impacts for two topic areas were determined to be significant and unavoidable. Next slide. These topics are greenhouse gas emissions and noise, and both relate to operation period effects of the project. For greenhouse gas emissions, it was determined that because the project would include natural gas in commercial kitchens, it would conflict with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District's recommendations to not include natural gas connections in new development. I'll also talk more about this item a little bit later. For noise, feasible mitigation measures were identified to reduce the nighttime noise generated by stationary sources. But because the project is in the conceptual design phase, it cannot be verified that the measures will be effective in all locations. And so to be conservative, we identified that as a significant and unavoidable impact. Next slide. So lastly, the draft EIR did consider a range of alternatives to the project, as shown here. None of the alternatives would substantially reduce or avoid the project impacts, and all of the identified mitigation measures would still be required. However, the reduced residential alternative was considered to be the environmentally superior alternative because it results in less construction and less overall development. So it's slightly reduced compared to the proposed project. And next slide. So now I'll cover the final EIR. It's important to note again that the final EIR does consist of both the draft and the RTC document. The RTC document is organized as shown on the slide. Approximately 270 comment letters from public agencies, organizations, and individuals were received on the draft EIR, in addition to the comments that were received at the public hearing held before the Planning Commission on the draft. The RTC document includes a written response to each comment that addresses the adequacy of the information and analysis in the draft EIR. The RTC document also includes minor corrections and clarifications to the draft EIR that were made either in response to the comments. clarifications to the draft EIR that were made either in response to the comments, or that were initiated by staff for clarification. So I'm going to give a high-level overview of the general themes that came up in the comments and the general response and outcome. I'm also going to cover revisions to the project very quickly, which Heather already addressed, and some supplemental analysis that was conducted. This all follows along with a staff report, which provides more detail. Next slide. Okay, so as I mentioned, a substantial volume of comments were received, and comments touched on nearly every aspect of the draft EIR. Many of the comments involve variations of the same key issues. So in order to consolidate responses and comprehensively address the comments related to some of these topics, eight master responses were developed. They are all shown on this slide, and I'll cover items three and four in a minute in more detail. But in general, these responses address themes around the duration of the public comment period, and access to supporting background information, comments that address the design or uses proposed by the project, which are not SEQA issues, the scope of alternatives and suggestions for additional alternatives, assertions made in some comments that were not supported by evidence, the requirements for identifying mitigation and how those relate to the environmental effects, and the overall adequacy of the draft EIR, and why none of the comments received or changes made in the final EIR require recirculation. So the responses to individual comments throughout the document often may refer back to these master responses. Next slide, please. So master response number three covers the environmental baseline used in the draft EIR. The baseline is a situation without the project, informs the basis for evaluating the effects that would occur with the project. The draft EIR uses an environmental baseline that is referred to as full occupancy of the mall in determining the number of trips that would be generated. Commenters questioned this methodology, and in particular raised concerns that impacts related to vehicle trips, such as overall congestion, air quality, and greenhouse gas emissions, and noise are understated. So the response clarifies that the baseline is appropriate to use for a couple of reasons. One, the mall's vacancy levels are actually fairly low, although they can fluctuate from time to time. Two, while the trip generation is based on the full existing square footage of gross leasable area, the trip generation rates uses the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE, trip generation rates, which are widely used and assume some percentage of rolling vacancy for shopping center uses. And third, the existing leasable area is entitled and permitted by right, and may be fully occupied at any time. The final EIR analysis also looked at whether conservative 5% vacancy would make a difference for any of the other environmental issue topics that rely on employment, and that did not use trip generation as the basis for evaluation. And the conclusion was that there would be no change to any of the analysis or the conclusions in the draft EIR. Next slide. So the next topic here sort of expands on the baseline discussion as it relates to how trip generation was identified, and the existing and future condition, and how future traffic volumes were identified. So this is master response number four. I want to stress, though, that traffic congestion or level of service on area roadways is no longer a SEQA metric for evaluation, and that much of the discussion around this topic is outside of the scope of the EIR, except where there may be secondary impacts. The takeaway here is that the use of the ITE trip generation rates was appropriate. The methodology for collecting existing and future traffic volume data is supported and consistent with the city's TA guidelines. And overall, it is factually supported that the number of trips generated by the project would be less than the baseline or even existing conditions. Next slide. So these next few slides address additional common themes that were raised in the comments. I'm going to go over them fairly quickly. And again, these items are also covered in the staff report. So I'm going to touch on school services, fire and emergency evacuation, and greenhouse gas impacts. So the commenters expressed concerns about the capacity of area schools in terms of increased enrollment from the project, and also congestion around pickup and drop-off periods, and potential hazards and conflicts. So the RTC document includes a comprehensive response to this item and confirms that the anticipated enrollment increase was anticipated in the general plan EIR, that the phased development allows for schools to plan for future enrollment increases. And most importantly, that state law specifies that payment of development impact fees, which are established by school districts, constitute full and complete mitigation for impacts to school facilities that result from development. And lastly, as I talked about before, the project would reduce overall congestion. It would not create new hazards during the school pickup and drop-off periods. Next slide. Several comments also express concerns related to fire and medical emergency services and evacuation. It's important to state again that SEQA looks at the physical impacts to the environment. So the question regarding fire services is whether or not those improvements would be needed, and whether or not those improvements would then in turn result in environmental impacts. So to determine that, we do look at fire service staffing, equipment, and overall resource capacity. And then, since the draft EIR was published, the city undertook a study which specifically looked at service within the North Gate area. The study, which is part of the final EIR, concludes that no new facilities would be needed. The fire department concurred with this finding, and the fire department also confirmed that adequate procedures are in place for emergency evacuation in the project area, including in the event of a wildfire. The final EIR further acknowledges that the site is surrounded by some areas that are prone to wildfire risk, but that the project would not create new, or worsen these conditions, which is the threshold that we must evaluate the project against. Therefore, it is appropriate to conclude that these impacts were less than significant. And next slide. So lastly, another item that came up in several comments is a concern regarding allowing the natural gas use in commercial kitchens, which I mentioned again, and everybody knows is a significant unavoidable project impact. The final EIR concludes that requiring commercial kitchens to be all-electric would not be feasible for the project, and would be inconsistent with the city's municipal code. Commenters suggested several mitigation measures to further reduce overall greenhouse gas emissions. But SEQA requires an actual nexus between the identified impact and the mitigation. There is really no mitigation beyond prohibition of natural gas use that would reduce or avoid this particular impact. It's also important to remember that this is a recommendation by the Air District, and it's not a requirement for all development throughout the state. Also, the project would overall have a net negative impact on GHG emissions, and natural gas use would be less under the proposed project than it is currently. Next slide. So that covers some of the key themes of the responses. The RTC document also covers minor revisions to the project that were made in June, and that came out after the draft EIR was published. There's a standalone chapter in the RTC document that covers in detail what those changes are, and that Heather covered, and how those changes relate to each of the environmental issue topics covered in the EIR. The takeaway is that there are no new or more severe impacts that would result from changes to the project, and the same impacts and mitigation measures would apply. So there are no material changes to the EIR analysis as a result of the minor revisions to the project. And next slide. So last item to note in the final EIR, a supplemental air quality analysis was completed to address some of the comments that were raised. The analysis includes the revisions to the project, and concluded that no new impacts would result with the change in some of the assumptions and data sources that were used. Additionally, some of the mitigation measures were refined, but these changes were not made to address any new or more severe impacts, and actually are more stringent than those that were identified in the draft EIR. And next slide. So last item is the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or the MMRP. The MMRP identifies all feasible mitigation measures from the final EIR as modified from the draft. Like the air quality mitigation measures, revisions were made to the operation period noise mitigation measure, and the measure related to sewer infrastructure upgrades. Again, these are refinements only. And the MMRP identifies the implementation strategy, timing, and responsibility for implementation of each measure. It also specifies the entity responsible for monitoring and enforcement. The MMRP would be adopted as part of the final EIR. And lastly, next slide. So that does conclude my overview of the EIR process. And one final point that I want to make is about the adequacy of the final EIR. So the planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation as to whether or not the final EIR is adequate. So the standard of adequacy per SEQA guidelines is shown on this slide. And basically, again, the purpose of SEQA is to inform the public and decision-makers of the environmental effects of a project, identify ways in which the adverse effects can be avoided or reduced, if possible, avoid the impacts to the environment, again, where feasible, and to disclose to the public the reasons the lead agency may choose to approve the project, even when it has adverse environmental effects. So the adequacy of an EIR is determined in terms of what is reasonably feasible, in light of factors such as the magnitude of the project, the severity of its likely environmental impacts, and the geographic scope of the project. The planning commission is again being asked to determine if the basic purposes of SEQA have been fulfilled, and if, based on your own independent judgment, the EIR is adequate. So that concludes my presentation. I'll hand it back to Heather.
Thank you, Teresa. I want to add one thing to Teresa's comments before wrapping this presentation up. It came to the city's attention today that there may be a few comment letters received during the public comment period, but not addressed in the response to comments. The city has done a preliminary review and believes the letters will not alter the conclusions in the EIR regarding impacts and mitigation measure, but the city will be addressing those letters prior to the city council hearing. Next slide. Finally, wrapping it up, and as outlined in your staff report, it is recommended that the planning commission receive public input on the project, and approve the three resolutions before you this evening, including the resolution recommending city council certification of the FEIR, adopt findings of fact, a statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, a resolution recommending the city council approve a zoning amendment to establish the North Gate Square PD District, approve the North Gate Town Square Development Plan, amend the city's zoning map, and rezone the 44.76 acre property from General Commercial to the North Gate PD District, and finally, resolution recommending the city council adopt a resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map, master use permit, environmental and design review permit, and master sign program for the North Gate Town Square project, and including modifications to conditions of approval 92 and 158 as read into the record. So I know the applicant does have a presentation, but staff is here to answer any initial clarifying questions. So I'll pass it back to you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Heather and Teresa. Excuse me. Commissioners, do you have any questions that you feel should be answered before the public comment?
I just have a question. If I have questions about the environmental design, and that's those topics, not the EIR, is this an appropriate time, or do we, is there time later for that? Because we didn't cover that in this presentation.
Through the chair. The applicant is going to do a presentation next, and there may be additional information provided to those issues at that time. And of course, once the public comment period is closed, the commission has an unlimited amount of time to ask questions. So it might be good to see if it's solved beforehand, and if not, you can definitely ask later on in the hearing.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no questions, then development team, it's your turn.
Margaret's going to tee up our presentation. It's going to be brief, I promise. So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Dave Geiser, Managing Director. I can fix that. Don't worry. My name is Dave Geiser. I'm Managing Director of Design and Construction for Malone Geyer Partners, have been project lead, former Lone Geyer on this project since its inception, since our original submittal back in 2021. Our comments tonight are going to reiterate our study session presentation in that there is nothing new to present. It's the same project that we had before, but I'd like to put some visual context to some of the changes that were made to, again, to not only remind those that were here, but for those people that weren't here at the study session, what is that our project is going to entail. And so I'm assuming I'm just telling you next slide, Margaret. Next slide. So we're going to start with, again, with the changes that were made to the project since the original EIR was submitted, and our final submittal to the, in June 2024 this year. However, I do want to reiterate, this project is the culmination of many outreach meetings, not only design review, planning commission, but reaching out to different special interest groups, but also the public, Responsible Growth Marin, the Bicycle Coalition. We've, as the list points out, I don't want to read through all this. We've been out in the community for the last three years soliciting input and responding to that input where we can. We couldn't change everything or incorporate every suggestion, but we certainly made it a definitive effort to be honest and open with the public in terms of what we couldn't change, and have made the changes where we could. And this, this community outreach slide continues to grow with each additional meeting that we have. And so, again, I just bring that up as, just really the underlying goal of ours is to listen to the public and provide the best project possible. Next slide. So this is our 2025 plan, and I wanted to point out some of the major changes that we've made quickly, and then I'll run through some design elevations. I think, as Heather pointed out in parcel one, this is where the EAH Affordable Housing was originally proposed. It was going to satisfy all of the affordable component for Phase 1. That's now been removed and replaced with 38 for-sale townhome units that are being added to the townhome. So we now have a total of 138 between parcel two and parcel one. It's the same design motif. We thought it was rather successful, and it landed pretty well with everyone that we showed it to in terms of different materials. I'll show pictures. But now, all of the inclusionary housing is going to be spread throughout all of Phase 1. So in all here, we have 10% in each of the different product types for the residential. So as that residential comes online, there'll be 10% affordable in each one of those phase developments. Town Square, as we all know, this has moved into Phase 1. It was originally supposed to be just part of Phase 2. It was substantially smaller, around 25,000 square feet. Over time, and with successive meetings and outreach, that town's center has now grown in this version by over 8,900 square feet. So now it's over 57,000 square feet by an acre and a quarter. And that square footage doesn't include the bike hub here. That's probably around 14,000 additional square footed, square feet. And then, again, this area here between the bike hub and the town square, we talked about the removable ballards. They just pull up out of the ground that block the car traffic, so that those spaces can be combined with additional square footage if perhaps we wanted to have a farmer's market, or an art show, or whatever. Start of a 5K, we can combine those spaces and eliminate the car traffic between the two and combine them. Then we have along North Gate Drive, we have, we've added the multimodal path. Originally, it was continuing, it stops right now at Marydale. So it continues along Los Ranchitos. Now we've extended up North Gate Drive all the way up to El Fason, connecting all of the residential units to the multimodal path system. In addition to that, we worked with WTB TAM and Bike Coalition, and we've removed all of the on-street parking within the residential development, and included a shared path for bikes and pedestrians. It's an 11-foot wide path that connects the bike hub with the residential communities and extends out to the multimodal path. The idea there is people are connected, it's better for bike circulation, and it gets people down, ultimately will get people down to the smart train down Marydale. Ultimately, we'll get people down to the smart train down Marydale. Oh, and then the one thing I also want to suggest, and I don't have a slide of it, so I'll just say it now. The sign program that's part of your package tonight, that builds on the signage that's already been developed that started by Mesa Rich. They actually increased and improved some of the signage that was out there. Our sign program builds on that original design and adds the signage that's necessary for a, for a project that's going to have some pretty buried retail components here that don't have furniture to the outside. They need signage in order, in order to survive. Next slide. So again, this is where the EAH affordable housing, it's now has the townhomes that match the parcel two. By the way, parcel two did go up from the original 88 units up to 100 three-story townhomes, for sale townhome products, total now 138. Next slide. And the design, we've been working pretty consistently with the planning staff to increase, we've got a lot of materiality in there. One of the concepts, and you'll see this facing some of the drives out here, the front doors to the units face out. They face the streets. And the idea is that it feels more like a neighborhood. Instead of having a wall or back of the house or the parking pushed up against the back, we've got the front doors on the street. So here's what you're walking through here. You see people out on their step. People, you know, seeing people walk by waving hello. But the idea is to create more eyes on the street. People feel safe. It's more of a community event to have front doors facing the streets. And that's how we've designed this project. Next slide. We haven't changed the parcel three. This is down there on the corner of Northgate Drive and Los Ranchitos. We have worked with the community, through community comments. These buildings were originally all five stories. They now stepped from six to five to four to three stories all the way down to Northgate Drive to limit the impact on of the street. And we've located all of our activation leasing, gyms, all those areas that are active in the, the project out along the street to, again, to increase the activity on the street, eyes on the street, instead of just backing those units up and create more of an institutional type development. And again, we're using a lot of materials here. Let me see, with the woods, the stones, the plasterers, that, again, trying to create a positive pedestrian experience. Next slide. This is parcel four. This is facing the park. This is our parcel four development that runs. This is, we've made a lot of change to the design here. It's hard to see. This is actually a masonry. That's actually just a lighter color. We've, we ran through the kind of the motifs, the ideas, the different typologies, the different buildings that we're trying to create. And we've done a lot of change to this building in response to a lot of DRB comments that we had on the design of this building as well. Next slide. A park, so a lot of change at the park. Based on public comments, we've gotten rid of all of the seat boulders that were out there, that were taking up some of the room to have more open access in terms of just larger events that are unobstructed by those seat boulders. So we've taken those out. We were proposing to have artificial turf. In response to comments, we've, now it's all natural turf. With the exception, and I think is included in our report as well, the pet areas. So there's a dog park in the added area that will have artificial turf. There's also some pet relief areas throughout the project. Those have to be artificial turf. They're just, you can't do it any other way. So, so those, that's the only artificial turf in the project. Next slide. Oh, and I should add too, we've increased the areas for play, the children's play structure and other areas around the park, all in response to comments. We've just, oh, and no gas fire pits. We've taken those out of the project as well. This is the bike hub area. It actually grew a little bit as well. This shows off the bollards that are here that close off the, the street to car traffic during special events. And again, Heather mentioned that we've made some changes to the, to the building design in response to planning comments as well. Next slide. This just shows some of the specialty buildings that are out facing the, the hub. This shows the enhanced paving that we have around the park area to get people to, to slow down, to realize they're in a special area, the town square. And then we've got our parking structure, what we're building. Not only are we enhancing the exterior, we're creating a elevator and stairs, that second floor right here on the corner. So the people, it's more convenient for people to park there. Next slide. This is, our goal here is to relocate ounces to the area. The road changes, how the road comes through this area. And so the idea is to relocate ounces to this side of the street and to provide for an outdoor venue for them here in this first phase. Next slide. And this is the same building. We've taken some comments from DRB in terms of shading and materiality. But this is Shops 2A that is now facing the, the town center inside the town square area. Next slide. And this shows the addition. So this is, this shows the, now on the west side of the, of the large shade structure, we now have the expanded park. On this side is the dog park area. And there was two roads of parking taken out here. And then on the other side, just more a green space area. So the stage now can face both ways. Next slide. We tend to be a, we're trying to be a model for sustainability here. All the residential built in this center will be all electric. All of our commercial will be solar ready. We have EV charging at greater standards for the parking. So we're using purple pipe for the entire project. We're dual plumbing all of the new construction. So all of these are raising the bar for sustainability. It's something we take seriously and it's all integrated into the project. Next slide. For phase two, the, when we had 96 units here and we went to 38 townhomes, the additional units went into phase two. If and when that gets developed, we'll simply add a half floor here to parcel five. So the, so the total number of units didn't change from 1422. It's just that 58 of them got moved from phase one to phase two. So phase one actually has 58 less units, if you're wondering how the, that discrepancy happened. That's what it was. That's really the only change from a planning standpoint to phase two. Next slide. And if I'm going fast, I apologize. I'm trying to be cautious of everyone's time here, but we can go back and revisit any of this if you want. All of our consultant team is here. We have, this is our 2025, or excuse me, this is our 2040 elevation from, from the west, showing the new parcel six and parcel five developments. Add the additional pad plants out on Los Galinas. And it also shows the enlarged park area. Next slide. By the way, the, what I want to show in these, is not so much the project, but the context that, that we're, we're showing, you know, what, what's around us and how we fit in. The product sits kind of in a bowl between the hill on the west and cemetery on the east. And we, of course, have the residence to the, to the south, which is why we oriented the townhomes over there to blend better into the southern neighborhood. But just context, you know, the, the project and how it, how it fits in. Next slide. This is parcel five. This is facing Marydale Drive. And the design of the parcel five building, the idea here is to break down the mass by having different sections of building with different architecture to, again, break down the overall mass. You'll see a lot of balconies and a lot of different material choices except, except, especially on the top floors, we have out open balconies in many spaces. Next slide. This is the corner of parcel five that faces, this is where Macy's is today, facing the park. And again, enhancing the ground floor with retail, residential up above. There's actually a masonry, a paint or light color masonry, but also breaking up the material to composite wood material, stepping back on the upper floors and then change, again, changing the material and the, the design on, to make, to break down the massing of the buildings. Next slide. And finally, a parcel six. This is where the Kohl's sits today. And again, a lot of effort being spent, and this is a design change as well, that they're looking to add more trellis area for the decks for the units up above, trying to break up the massing of these buildings by stepping back on the upper floors and breaking up the building in between. This building's a podium, so it's got a rooftop deck up behind there. But again, using different materials to enhance the ground floor retail versus the residential above. This is the new major one that's going to face the parking lot that Kohl's faces now. Next slide. Quick question about fees. We're paying all, all these different fees we pay into the project. Next slide. Total's about 25 to million, 25 to 30 million dollars in fees that we pay. About half of that is school fees. Another good chunk of that are the infrastructure, water and sewer connection fees. I just want to let everyone know that we're, we're paying our fair share of fees when it comes to this project. And that's, that's through, through buildout. So I'm going to tee up our video if I could. What I couldn't show you last time, we had some technical difficulties. We've actually created a, a video of the project that will actually start on the, the north end of the project looking in. It'll bring, well, I'll just let the video play for itself where you're at. So again, we're coming down Los Galinas and looking in towards what is now the existing Macy's with the righty building in front of us. And we're going to zoom down to, you can turn the volume up a little bit because I don't have to talk the whole time. So coming down into Marydale, we see the multimodal path connection to our left that now comes into the site and in through the, the town square. We see in the distance, we see parcel six. But here's the, here's the town center. Again, all 57, 58,000 square feet of that. Multimodal path takes a left and takes you to the bike hub. There you see now all of our natural grass without the full boulders in there. So coming into the bike hub and the area that we can block off for other events and create a larger space out there. You see our new shop buildings here, keeping the existing mall covering and redesigning that to be a part of the, of the building there. We talked about breaking up the massing for parcel six here. We see ground floor retail with residential up, up above, but stepping back and broken up to allow light into that center area, but also providing covered balconies. We see then, this is the new Shops 2A. There'll be all new shop buildings. And we see what is now then, that's the existing Macy's today that'll be pulled back and have, that has the new 58 additional units from the previous plan. We see the enhanced paving again around the town center area. And we're going to take a trip along the multimodal path that connects all the way through now into the residential. And again, the idea that this gives us idea of the size of our town square surrounded by activated retail and residential. And that should wrap that up. So our entire consultant team is here to answer questions, not only on the design itself. So our architects, landscape architects are all here. Our EIR team is here, Dudek is here, and all their consultants answer questions you might have, as well as our attorney team who worked closely with the city developing not only the EIR conditions of approval and all that. They're all here to answer your questions as well. Feel free to answer, ask me any questions you have. Happy to answer those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the developers at this point? Questions that you think should not wait until after the public comment?
I can wait till public comment.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Okay, so we have no questions. So now we'll open the public comment period. And each speaker will have three minutes, three minutes to speak. I'll invite you to identify yourself and where you live in San Rafael, should you choose to.
Yes, thank you for your time and hard work on this project. I'm Laura Silverman, a 20-year resident of Terre Linda. I'm presenting in behalf of Responsible Growth Marin. I'd like to address the city's confusing and inconsistent communications and questionable deadlines relating to response time on the FEIR by the community. On the community and development page of the city website, it is stated, "We're dedicated to enhancing the quality of life in our community by encouraging public engagement, supporting decision-making, helping both decision-makers and residents develop and implement policies." So how can it be explained that after three-plus years of the community consistently participating in the redevelopment of Northgate through attending numerous meetings and writing thousands of letters, we are being pushed out of the decision-making at the last minute with total disregard by expecting us to read, interpret, and comment on the 1,400-plus-page FEIR and the 36-page staff report within a two-day deadline? Here are the facts. It was announced that the FEIR document would be made public on November 14th. It wasn't released until Friday, November 18th. I'm, October. Some of us received a postcard on October 15th stating that in order to have our comments included with the agenda materials provided to the PC for today's meeting, our communications had to be received the week before this meeting. That is on Tuesday, October 22nd. Comments received by October 28th, before 12:00 noon, would be conveyed to the commission as a supplement. Anything received after would be saved in the project admin record. In summary, the city was late with the FEIR and it was released on Friday, November 18th. And we had two working days to read, interpret, and comment on it. The city then released the agenda for this meeting just a few days ago on Friday, November 20, October 25th, which included the 36-page staff report. The confusing statement on the agenda was that the comments needed to be submitted by 4:00 PM today with no reference as to how the comments would be saved. Would they be conveyed to the commission or saved to the record? The community, and quite frankly, even a subject matter expert, would require more than two days to review these very complex and important documents that will shape the future of Northgate for many, many years to come. Can anyone in the city justify why such disregard and disrespect has been exhibited by these faulty communications and outrageously short timelines? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Grace Garrity. I'm a 38-year resident of Terre Linda. And I'm comment, I'm commenting on behalf of Responsible Growth in Marin. We are in favor of workforce housing and would have preferred that Merlin Geyer provided more than the minimum 10% affordable housing. However, we do want to commend them for distributing the affordable units throughout the project and for the inclusion of for-sale townhomes. Tonight, I want to call your attention to a different matter. The Parkland in lieu fees the developer will have to pay for not meeting the city's general plan required recreation space. We request that as a condition of the project's approval, you require that the project in lieu fees be applied specifically to improving the recreational facilities in North San Rafael. The recent Terre Linda Park and Community Center Enhancement Plan shows that many upgrades are direly needed. Thank you for listening and for your consideration to this important community issue.
Thank you, Grace.
Hi, my name is Kirk Warnock. I live in Terre Linda. We've been there for 50 years. Whereas we see a lot of this nice motif and everything, we're in a suburban area. You all saw the elevations in there of these six-story buildings, all going to be crammed into a suburban, a single-story area. It, it's just, you know, it, it's too much. Right now, if you go out and try to go anywhere on Manuel Freitas Parkway, any, anywhere is between about 7:15 and 8:30. It's just, it's just a log jam. And so I urge the city, I mean, if there's going to be more housing, it's got to be single-story or two-story. I mean, you can put all kinds of trees and the motif and all that kind of stuff. But making this a city when it's a suburban area, it's just not fair to these people that invested their savings in their homes and everything and make it a urban area. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Hi there. I'm Patricia Warnock, his wife of 55 years. I have a question. It's unusual, but by a show of hands, which one of you in the last four weeks has been to this area in question at either 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, 12:00 noon to 1:00, 4:00 to 5:00 PM in the afternoon? Okay. Because what I'm seeing, and, and if I mention these names of streets, well, they mean something. Northgate Drive, Del Percedio, the exit off of 101 South, the exit off of 101 North. Today, we were coming back at about 5:30. Traffic was actually backed up bumper to bumper in the slow lane of 101 North at the Freitas Parkway exit. In 1962, when I had my first job at the Emporium, it made me realize I had to go to college and learn how to do something. and learn how to do something because that job would have driven me crazy. There was a left turn at Del Presidio to get to the shopping center, which was busy at that point. We can't do that anymore. If we go a half a block more to Northgate Drive, all that traffic that's getting from the freeway, both north and south, has got to be funneled through Northgate Drive. The other thing is, is when you make an exit right now from 101 South, yes, from 101 South, you are coming off, you're looking ahead of you, you have a very short distance before you hit Northgate Drive, and bumper-to-bumper traffic. Okay, we've got a hotel up there, we've got an undeveloped lot where the UPS store is, there's gonna be something there, we know it. At the same time, we're trying to look behind us and see this traffic that is coming over the overpass, the Freitas overpass, and it's impossible to monitor both lanes. One lane comes into two. You know, it's very interesting, and I find it really offensive, that in all this discussion with all these years, the concept of traffic has not been forthcoming. It's not been forthcoming, and I feel we need a second opinion on this latest environmental report. To say that the traffic will not have any impact from those 1,500 homes and this picture we just saw, the video we just saw, is absolutely ludicrous. Absolutely. And let me tell you something else. Those of us who have lived there, we have taught in your schools, we have raised outstanding Americans, we are family people, we support one another, and you guys are casting the whole western side of Terre Linda to the wind. I have no doubt in a major fire that the people in this development will get out, but those of us in the back, in those eiklers and our Kenny Homes, we are going to be stuck. So this, you guys need to put a halt to this, you need to stop and take a breath. And the other thing I feel on this traffic issue, this city should hold workshops, at least two workshops, for the people involved so that we can understand what the traffic impact will be.
Thank you, thank you, Patricia.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Hartzell. I'm a professional planner, and I strongly support this project, and I urge you to support it as well and approve it and send it to the city council. I'm very excited about this project, to be honest, and I think that this project is perfect for this area and for the city of San Rafael, and it's necessary and it's needed, and it will make San Rafael better, and it will raise property values in the surrounding neighborhood. And this is not a high-density project, and this is a medium-density project, and it's appropriate for the city of San Rafael, which is a medium-density city. If you, there are other places where you can see high-density, San Francisco, New York, Tokyo, Hong Kong, that is not what this is. This is San Rafael-appropriate. And I want to talk about traffic, and I'm a professional transportation planner. I agree with the findings of the EIR that this project will not result in increased traffic, and that's because, that's because this project is designed to be extremely walkable, bikeable, and transit-friendly. It's located within the immediate transit shed of the Smart Train, and there have been bike paths and pedestrian paths designed throughout the site and the surrounding neighborhood. There are bike pathways either existing or planned that will connect this project to all over San Rafael and all over Marin County. And Marin County and San Rafael need more housing for young families like mine, need housing for the people who work and serve the communities in San Rafael, the teachers, the firefighters, the police officers, the service sector workers, and that's, I think, who this project is for. And I want to talk about what's the number-one cause of the traffic on our roads, and I know there is traffic and there's, people have a right to be upset about it. It's regional traffic. The reason we have so much traffic on Marin's roads is because we don't have enough housing in Marin to serve the people who want to live and work here. Instead, people have to work, have to live in Antioch and Vacaville and commute into Marin County, and that is what's responsible for most of the traffic. So when you build housing that is close to walking distance, biking distance, I still have time, to people's jobs, then you actually reduce traffic. You make it possible for them to choose other modes, which this project has. So this is a great project. Thank you to the development and design team for listening so much to the needs of the community, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate your comments, sir. I'm going to ask you, before our next speaker begins, I'm going to, Matthew, I was not trying to speed you up or slow you down. I was going to suggest that we maintain a certain level of decorum in here, and we respect people's viewpoints, even when they differ from our own, and allow the speaker to speak. Thank you very much, sir.
My name is John Freudman. I don't live in Terre Linda. I'm not a professional traffic person, but I'm an amateur Terre Linda traffic observer for the past 40 years. I worked at Kaiser for 20 years. My elderly parents lived in Terre Linda there last 15 years, and I have two adult children in residences in homes in Terre Linda. The project is progressing with some improvements, and I'm one who's disappointed that traffic seems exempt from the EIR, but that is apparently the way it is. But I urge the planning department and the city council and the developer to proceed in a manner that will permit future traffic mitigation actions. Specifically, that there be the ability to expand on the planned parking in the Northgate project, specifically an additional parking structure if it's needed, and pedestrian walkways over Northgate Drive and Los Colinas Avenues that will allow some of the multimodality, bicycle and pedestrian ways to be connected to the community. Because the project is in a crucial crossroads between the freeway 101 and important ways getting south, both for emergency and non-emergency movement between Central San Rafael and Terre Linda. The project stipulates one and a half parking spots per residence. That's fine, going to less than two-car families is a nice goal, but many people will require two vehicles to get to work and to live. And if the project's residential parking capacity exceeds the number of cars, well, then where will these people park? Well, they'll park on Golden Hind, which is a crucial access route for avoiding 101 and the Northgate. It's also an important route to get to, along with Nova Albion, to get way to get to both Terre Linda High and the Vallesito School. So, and if people are parking, can't, if residents can't park, they're going to park at Northgate 1, which will then affect Safeway and Costco, Costco, that's a Freudian, Starbucks. The, look, these adverse effects can be mitigated by an additional 200 spots in a parking garage in one of the surface lots that's planned, if it's needed. And there ought to be the ability, as this project moves forward, to be able to do that and not be locked in. A strength of the plan, I'm just going to finish with one other thing, a strength of the plan is the multimodality, the bike paths. You need to have a way for those to get over Los Colinas and Northgate Drive because high volumes of bikers and kids going to school and people getting on buses, right when you need the buses to be able to get through during the commutes, that's not going to go well. You'll need to build those, and you'll want to have the plan such that you can add those later. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. My name is Daryush Devidi. I'm a San Rafael business owner and a board director on the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a resident of San Rafael with two kids, 11 and 14 years old, who attend San Rafael schools. I'm also a big baseball fan. I'm bummed I didn't get to watch the game, but I believe the meeting that's taking place here today is way more important than any baseball game because it sets the tone and momentum for all our create-frost in San Rafael, the opportunity to grow and also be able to flourish in the future. Over the last three decades, the Chamber of Commerce has made new housing within the city a top priority. As we know, the new housing production is not meeting the expectation, affecting both the overall price for rental and for sell units. We're also not meeting the general availability market rates for inclusionary housing, which is a huge deal. For example, my employees have to commute from places like Vallejo or other surrounding communities for an hour and a half, just to come to Marin to work. And after a while, retention, attrition hits. These people don't want to come to work, no matter how much you pay them, because they don't want to drive. And as a result, many businesses are suffering and closing here in San Rafael. The pandemic has exacerbated this trend by transforming the way businesses move away from in-person employees and adopt a virtual model. For example, these virtual models directly affect San Rafael local restaurants, retails, because they can't survive with these customers. The chamber supports the Northgate project to help inject life into our small and medium businesses by creating more housing, stock in our retail and in restaurant-heavy areas. Northgate Mall is one of the best housing sites in Marin County. The site's located approximately to Mass Transit, which includes a plan that's underway to improve connection to smart civic center stations. The site's also a major, close to a major employer such as Kaiser, BioMarin, and the county, which will make these units particularly appealing to the local workforce. The Chamber of Commerce would like to commend Merlon Geyer for listening to the community and proposing something that aligns with the neighborhood vision. This space is vital to the economic future of the city and will create a space where the community can live, work, play, and it's very exciting. The proposal also aligns with the community vision and has the potential to become a place where locals, friends, and families can meet for outdoor amenities, seeing a movie, shopping, and dining. For example, my favorite thing to do with my kids is go to see a movie, and recently they don't want to go to Northgate Mall. They say it's boring, it's a ghost town, it's what Gen Z calls it, El Res, which means it lacks charisma. We urge you to approve these three items and move for approval for the city council. We need to bring back the res to get the biz done here in San Rafael. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Daryush.
Hi, my name is Shirley Fisher. I'm a resident of Terre Linda and a member of Responsible Growth in Marin. I've been involved in planning for the Northgate area and the North San Rafael promenade for 25 years or more. Today you received, I want to talk about project entitlements. Today you received an email from me regarding details on water fountains and playground details that need to be included in the landscape plan or added as conditions to the project. I ask you to read that email and accept those recommendations for including these additions. Tonight, I want to address a major issue for your action. You've received multiple comments already about the inadequacy of the EIR baseline traffic study based on theoretical national averages rather than actual traffic accounts around Northgate Mall. The conclusion that the project will not add traffic to the area does not pass a credibility Because we do not have accurate assessment of actual traffic impacts around the project, it's extremely important that follow-up traffic studies be done to assess the true traffic conditions as this project progresses. It is critical that the project's master use permit be conditioned with requirements for the follow-up traffic studies, including the following. First, six months following completion and occupancy of Phase 1 of the project, the 2025 master plan, an updated traffic study based on actual traffic current accounts be prepared by a licensed traffic engineer approved by the city and funded by the project sponsor to assess and report on items such as these. On-site and off-site traffic operations, including level of service conditions on surrounding road segments and intersections. By the way, this is all in my email. Including Northgate Drive, Los Colinas Avenue, Del Presidio, Freitas Parkway, Highway 101 interchanges Marydale Road overpass and Los Franchitos Road. So that's onsite and off-site traffic operations. General use and potential conflicts, including bypass traffic diversions through contiguous and Terre Linda neighborhoods. If deemed necessary, the updated traffic study shall present recommendations, including, but not limited to, road improvements and/or lane conversions, additional emergency vehicle access, signalization and stop sign additions or adjustments, and traffic calming measures, example, speed bumps or other measures to deter bypass traffic in surrounding neighborhoods. Lastly, the project sponsor shall post security, example, a letter of credit or cash deposits to fund needed circulation improvements and/or traffic calming measures deemed necessary. By the way, this is by precedent from the approval of the conditions of the BioMarin project downtown, so these are not new ideas. Secondly, so this is the six months' traffic study after Phase 1. Secondly, after Phase 2 completion, you should do a similar traffic study, require a similar traffic study with similar requirements. These are not just for convenience, these are for the health and safety of the residents. I thank you for considering these recommendations.
Good evening, Commissioners. Shirley Fisher is really a hard act to follow, because I also wanted to talk about traffic, but I'll be very, very quick. First of all, I really want to recognize and applaud the efforts of Responsible Growth Marin for all they've done over the last few years to represent our community, of which I'm a part. We have, we feel that they've been true advocates for our community. My name's Janet Shirley, and I live in the area. I've been a resident of San Rafael for 25 years. We raised our son, he went to San Rafael High, and I live right behind Walter Place. And if you don't know where that is, you don't live near the Northgate project. Walter's Place is adjacent to Los Franchitos Road, and it also connects us to San Rafael Meadows, of which I'm a part. So I would like to talk about the traffic impact because I feel like the EIR is not adequate. With all the new housing and added vehicles, how could our two-lane roads handle any emergency situation? I just don't feel that anything's addressed that yet. What do we do in case of an earthquake, in case of a wildfire, in case of flooding? Or if there are some disaster on Highway 101, and this happens periodically where there's a really big traffic accident, and people utilize our roads, they utilize Los Franchitos and Lincoln to try and get around the big, whatever's happened on Highway 101, and it creates a disaster? Currently, the traffic study for this project relies on an average shopping center data from a state handbook rather than real-time local data. Given the planned 1,442 new units, it's hard to believe that there won't be significant increase in traffic. It's just impossible to imagine that there won't. To ensure accuracy, I strongly urge that the master use permit require follow-up traffic studies at each project phase, as mentioned by Shirley Fisher, using actual traffic counts to monitor any changes and address needed mitigation. There is a precedent for this approach. For instance, the Locklommen Marina Project required follow-up studies to verify its parking impact. We could do the same. This level of oversight is critical to ensure safe and efficient traffic flow in our community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Howman. I'm here with my colleagues from the Marin Organizing Committee. I happen to be a 30-year resident of San Rafael, and I live in Marinwood, very close to the area we're speaking of. And I just want to mention again that I'm also representing Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Marin, which looks right down on Northgate, and also the Marin Organizing Committee represents 24 faith-based and nonprofit institutions in Marin. So here are the facts. Northgate Mall is in decline. There is a housing... There is a housing crisis in Marin and in the Bay Area in general. The latest figures on the median price of a home in Marin is approximately $1.7 million, as reported recently in the IJ. We have an opportunity to provide needed housing to mitigate this crisis, and we urge the commission to accept this final EIR is consistent with the draft EIR. The developer has been responsive to community feedback in the following ways: adding more owner-occupied options, integrating the affordable housing units throughout the development, the concept of the town square has been expanded, and more green space has been included throughout this project. Shopping and retail, including, I believe, a grocery store, will be mixed in, decreasing the car trips residents need to make to access retail goods. According to our colleagues and one of our member institutions, the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, denser housing is more efficient when it comes to the usage of water, electricity, and in this case, access to public transportation compared to single-family private homes. People working closer to where they live will cut down on traffic and emissions. Instead of sitting in traffic on 101 and adding to pollution, they'll most likely be a few minutes' drive to work. Based on our research, we have discovered that there is approximately 46,000 workers every week commuting into Marin from other counties. Imagine if those folks could live closer to where they work. If we want our teachers, EMTs, healthcare workers, firefighters to live in Marin, then we need more housing. Please approve this final EIR and the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening, Mike Gelati. I'm here to talk about this project. You know, our family's been in Marin for over 100 years, and Marin has been the beautiful county that it is because we take opportunities to grow and develop, and we don't live on fear and uncertainty. This project is so needed in this county because we need growth, we need vibrancy. If you go to Northgate, it's dead. San Rafael is the flagship of Marin County, needs to grow and develop. We need opportunities, we need places to live. If you look at this opportunity, there can't be a better place to build in Marin and develop. It's got so much acreage, it's got so much room. I know a little bit about infrastructure. You can't have better infrastructure. You've got Marydale Crossing, which nobody uses. You've got a new off-ramp, which is going to have a roundabout that's going to improve all the traffic there. You've got multiple ways in and out. Everybody's talking about traffic at 7:15, noon. Yeah, go anywhere in the county at 7:15, or noon, or 5 o'clock, there's traffic, okay? That's the way, you know, the county is. You think traffic's bad here? Go visit my son in LA, then you'll know traffic. You can't go anywhere in time, any day. So, you know, the reality is, is that this is the right project. I trust the developer, I think they're responsible, they're responsive, but I also trust our elected officials. I trust the Planning Commission. I trust the people that did the EIR to do the right thing. And the right thing is to take the opportunity to create a new vibrant community in Marin so that we can be proud of it and have a place to go for our families to enjoy the future. I urge a vote on yes on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney, Vice President of Sustainable San Rafael. Sustainable San Rafael continues to support the Northgate Town Square project. It showcases many features needed for a sustainable future and transforms a car-dependent shopping mall into a vibrant and walkable town center enlivened by much-needed housing. We also continue to urge the city to require mitigation of what the EIR calls the project's significant and unavoidable greenhouse gas impact. This impact is clearly avoidable. The EIR states that the impact can be avoided by eliminating natural gas in the project's small number of restaurants, extending the electrification already provided in the rest of the project, and avoiding the expense of new gas lines. The straightforward mitigation also avoids the city being forced to make a finding of overriding consideration. In effect, declaring that the flexibility for a few restaurants to cook with gas is more important than meeting our urgent climate emergency by every means possible. We have the means to avoid this nonsensical finding. With non-polluting induction cooking already used in many restaurants and preferred by many chefs for its precision control of heat, the EIR's core conclusion that this superior cooking technology is infeasible can no longer be justified. The rationale offered that induction cooking is infeasible because it might discourage some national fast-food brands simply suggests more opportunity for more forward-looking local businesses to thrive. The further argument that EIR mitigations can only be feasible if they enforce existing code would make most mitigations pointless, or at least redundant. Finally, the fear that such a mitigation might invite litigation ignores the fact that the recent Ninth Circuit ruling on electrification specifically applies to local ordinances, not to EIR mitigations. Clearly, it would be feasible for this project to go without gas. Again, we want Northgate to proceed and to succeed and to stand as a model for climate-responsible development. That can be achieved by your addition tonight of a mitigation eliminating gas from these few restaurants. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for being here, thanks for listening to these comments. My family has lived in Marinwood. We've had a house there for 64 years. So I saw, I remember Northgate when it wasn't even developed at all, when Las Colinas stopped at Lucas Valley Road. I think there's a lot to like in this project, I will say that. But the idea that this is not going to create any kind of traffic issue in addition to what's going on now is an insult to the intelligence of everybody in this room, including yourselves. That is ridiculous. So at the very least, I think you should pause to address these concerns, really study them. A number of really intelligent people have talked about additional studies being needed. I think that's the least that you guys could do. I just want to talk about this for a second because you're talking about 1,440 units. Well, my girlfriend lives in an apartment complex at the very end of, I'm sorry, blanking on it, well, at the very end where Scotty's Market is, near there, right? Yeah, thank you. And sometimes there, in a two-bedroom place or three-bedroom place there, there's four cars. They have four cars. So if realistically, with 1,440 units, you're going to have at least 2,800 cars. Do you have 2,800 parking spaces for those cars? I don't think you do. You have one and a half, you have 2,100. Those additional 700 cars are going to park all the way up on Nova Albion, the side streets, you name it. There're going to be cars all over the place. And in addition, if there's ever an emergency and those people that live way out, you know, towards Scotty's are trying to get out during an emergency, and there's a big development out there, no way, there's going to be no way that they're going to get out, they're going to be able to get out and get to the freeway or get to safety. So if there's a wildfire that's coming out in that area, forget it. So, and also, this project has gone from 500 units to 900 units to 1,400 units. I think there needs some restraint here, you know, literally. Think about two cars per unit at least, okay? And then what the effect of that's going to be? I think this project is a nice idea, but I think it needs to be scaled down considerably and really rethought. And if we're up to me, I would make half of that area just parkland, park, nature, trees, grass. Yeah, thank you very much for your time and.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'm Janine Loray, and I'm a Terre Linda resident. I wholeheartedly agree with the gentleman who spoke before me that this project just really needs to be scaled back. I support reasonable, responsible residential development at Northgate, and I'm going to speak to a very common refrain about traffic tonight, but I'm going to raise it again because it's just such an important issue. This is the largest proposed residential development in Marin in years. As many residents have commented, Terre Linda deserves an EIR that's based on accurate baselines, which contain logical findings that compare current conditions to the conditions that would exist upon full project build-out and which contains accurate information on what the impacts to the community truly will be. An EIR that does not meet these standards would be, in my opinion, a dereliction of the duty of city leaders, the duty that they owe to the residents. In the final environmental impact report, the city states that EIRs ordinarily use existing environmental conditions as the baseline. However, the city argues that it is legally permissible for it not to use the typical baseline of current conditions here. Just because the city can make a legal argument to justify its actions does not mean it should, especially with so much at stake for local residents who are depending on the city to use its discretion wisely and fairly. Instead, the city opts to use the hypothetical baseline, assuming a fully functioning mall, which Northgate clearly is not and has not been for years. And as we know, the EIR states that the transportation impact study determined that the project would result in a reduction of traffic and beneficial impacts to emergency response times. As the gentleman before me said, one of the gentlemen before me said, "That's just an insult to us and to everybody in this room," and defies logic. The city refutes the public's concerns by stating in the FEIR that they are not based on evidence. On the contrary, our concerns are based on common sense and the empirical evidence we witness every day as Terre Linda residents who constantly live, drive, and walk near or through the mall. We, more than anyone, know the mall's current traffic conditions, which is why so many of us have raised concerns. While perhaps not required by state law, city leaders should fulfill their duty to city residents and insist on obtaining accurate information, including studying actual current trips within the area during AM and PM peak hours to ensure the project's success for the community. Otherwise, the purpose of CEQA, to inform the public and city of the environmental impacts, including their severity, cannot be fulfilled. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Deborah Howell. I'm a member of the Marin Organizing Committee and an over 10-year resident of San Rafael. I live about a mile from what is now the Northgate Mall, and I'm frequently there in the area, both by walking and driving. I urge that this body recommend that the city council adopt the final environmental impact report for redevelopment of the existing Northgate Mall. I live, well, I just want to say that we are in great need of additional housing and especially affordable housing for workers who live in Marin, who work in Marin but have to commute because they can't afford housing in Marin. And we also need affordable housing for seniors and people with disabilities who want to stay in Marin but can't find housing that they can afford. For these reasons, and also because the development will favorably revitalize the Northgate Mall area, I strongly urge you to vote yes on adopting the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Hello there. My name's Elke Reinhardt, and I've lived in the Terre Linda area for about 14 years. I apologize if this is disjointed. I lost my notes, and I just jotted a few things down. I'm really disappointed in my city council and especially developers for putting such a project forward. It was just, sort of just slid under the rug and worse were the dumping ground. There's three developments in San Rafael right now. There's Fourth Street senior residents with 191 units coming in, Dominican, 44 units and six duplexes, Urban Street for 213, and now we have this for 1,442. That's just outlandish in size. I live on that, on the street that dumps into this tiny, tiny, two-way lone street. And let me tell you, if there's an accident on 101, it is bumper to bumper to bumper to bumper. We've had fairs and festivals at the mall, it's bumper to bumper to bumper. We've had a fire up on the hill, you know? I mean, yes, we need low-income housing, but 10% isn't going to do anybody any good. These people can't live here because they can't afford to live in Marin. Just like if I moved to Antioch, it would be really inexpensive for me to live there. And, you know, we've got, it's just a huge safety issue. And look at the design. If you look at the design and remove those fake trees, those 50, 60-foot trees, if you look down on it, it is a concrete jungle. And I invite all of you to go online and look at Gears website and look at their developments. They love a concrete jungle. It's not going to look like this. And this idea that you're going to put in a, what was it, a 150-square-foot area next to each huge building, that's like a Motel 6 room. I mean, what are we going to do? Five people stand there? That's not, what are you going to do in that little strip of grass? If you look at the design, it's all concrete. It is not at all fitting in Marin County. It doesn't fit into the hillside, it doesn't fit into the area. This is a massive mistake in Terre Linda. Terre Linda and San Rafael get dumped on, and you know what our city looks like. It's shameful and embarrassing. If you tried to dump this, look at St. Vincent's, there's tons of acreage out there. You could develop 100 acres out there. There's plenty of open space. Why do you pick here in this little two-lane road? We've got guide dogs for the blind, we've got the high school with 1,200 students, we've got Alma Via with 130 units, Drake Terrace with 204. I mean, there's a lot of people to evacuate, and I don't think that has been considered at all here. And I am absolutely insulted that 1,400 cars you don't think is going to have any impact? Are you kidding? Everybody has two cars. I don't know anybody who has no car in Marin. And if you think anybody's going to take this train to nowhere, the train is a joke. It is not successful. And to walk to the train, you have to walk through homeless encampments. It's not okay. This is way out of scale. I'm all for building a development there, but let's keep it in keeping with, like, Green Bray, you know, or Mill Valley. I mean, this is not a dumping ground. I want to keep Terre Linda beautiful. It's beautiful now. You look around at the hills, it is stunning. But the traffic and the bumper-to-bumper and the amount of people, we just, we just can't tolerate it here.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Bobby Riles. I've lived here for over 25 years, and I agree with the situation and the traffic. It's appalling. It's appalling that you could say that an increase of 30% population with this development is not going to increase traffic. I mean, that's ridiculous. It's a joke. So there's going to be 1,422 units. Well, there's probably going to be two people or three per unit, and each of them is probably going to have a car. So you're talking an increase of 28,000 to 3,000 new vehicles, and where are they going to park? I don't think the plan is adequate for that, and I'm just, it's embarrassing. And also, there's the crime situation. I think it's going to increase the crime, which we already have some, with car break-ins, et cetera, et cetera. It's just, it's just not safe, and we just can't put up with it. It's just not okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Good evening, Commissioner. Susan Coleman, longtime resident of Terre Linda, and I'm representing Responsible Growth in Marin. I won't be talking about traffic. RGM has worked in a cordial manner with Malone-Geyer for several years, and we appreciate the changes that it's made to the project. However, RGM is disappointed that the final EIR dismisses many genuine and valid concerns raised by RGM and other San Rafael residents by hiding behind legal defenses rather than fixing the problems. Our major concerns include... behind legal defenses rather than fixing the problems. Our major concerns include air pollutant emissions, including dust and increased noise during both construction and operation of the project, as well as impacts on local streets from heavy trucks. The final EIR requires that all larger construction equipment comply with the latest emission standards set by the EPA, yet there is no guarantee that this will in fact happen. Construction equipment can last for a long time, and contractors do not, as a matter of course, buy all-new machines just because new ones are available. Despite multiple requests for a dedicated, full-time onsite construction manager who is responsible for implementing this and other mitigation measures and is accessible to the public, the final EIR does not require one. Requirements for construction managers are implemented in mitigation measures in SEQA documents for projects of all sizes, and Northgate should be no exception. The lack of a dedicated construction manager also affects noise monitoring. Instead of ensuring that construction noise levels are kept within mandated levels, the final EIR simply states that depending on community reporting, the city could determine that additional noise measurements or monitoring is warranted. The cat's kind of already out of the bag or the horse is out of the barn at that point. And it shouldn't be left to just a complaint line. It, we need to be proactive about this. Construction managers must be onsite and be easily accessible to members of the public so that they can deal with concerns as they are happening. It's useless for a concern to be reported to the manager if it will be hours or days before the manager will be onsite to know what's really happening. So, onsite construction manager is the request here. And I would ask all of us to keep in mind, 10% of this project is affordable. The rest is market rate housing, market rate, thousands of dollars to rent a two-bedroom apartment. So I know what people are hopeful for workforce housing, but this may not speak to their needs. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Susan.
All right. My name's Gary Birbauer. I am a business representative for the Sheet Mill Workers Local Union 104. But I'm here tonight representing the working families who are members of the Marin County residents for Responsible Development. These families make their living as electricians, plumbers, team fitters, sprinkler fitters, and sheet mill workers. They live here as your neighbors, friends, and members of the community. Residence supports new development, but it must be done in the right way to reduce environmental impacts and support the local workforce. The Northgate project will build over thousands of new homes and commercial uses at the old mall site. This is a huge development. But the EIR doesn't do enough to mitigate the project's air quality, public health, and climate change impacts. For example, our experts found that the project has significant air quality and greenhouse gas impacts from disposal of asbestos-containing materials. But the ER didn't analyze the amount of asbestos in the buildings and underestimated the distance to haul, that haul trucks will need to travel to specialized landfills to dispose it safely. As a result, project construction will create more air pollution than the ER says it will. The city must add mitigation measures to reduce air quality impacts. Also, the project does not support local construction workforce. We have been told that developer plans to flip this project and is unwilling to enter into a community workforce and training agreement to ensure that whoever constructs a project uses local labor, maintains area wage standards, provides health and retirement benefits, or supports career pathways, providing opportunities for construction apprentices. Projects built by non-union labor are a barrier to career development for the construction workforce. This undermines the union's cooperative efforts with the city of San Rafael to provide well-paying construction career pathways for graduates of local high schools. We urge the city to not approve this project until the EIR is revised to reduce the project's air quality impacts. And the city should not adopt a statement of overriding considerations unless the project demonstrates a commitment to providing employment opportunities for our highly-trained construction workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Hello. My name is Gail Napell. My husband and I moved to Terre linda 25 years ago. We live, play, volunteer, shop, vote, pay taxes, and raised our children in the neighborhood. I owned a small business in Terre linda for 11 years, and my husband still co-owns a small business in San Rafael. I do have a few technical comments on the final EIR, which I submitted in writing, and I will not repeat all the wonderful comments that people have already made. Thank you for my fellow citizens. However, I am here to voice my family's support for the project. We're eager for our community to have the much-needed housing and 21st century retail and public spaces. And I'd rather see Malone Geyer build housing than have our city wind up paying fines because we don't meet our state-required housing element numbers. This is a very real thing that could happen, everybody. So, and I won't tell you because you need to, you know, we don't know what the exact fines would be, but some, they could be shocking. We don't want, we want productive use of our money. We don't want to have to pay fines for something because we didn't do what we were supposed to do. So I do thank you to my fellow residents for all of your comments. I thank those of you who behave as adults and are respectful to one another. Thank you. We really appreciate that. And I thank the development team in the city for continuing to include us in the process and for individually responding to every comment and all the comment letters. We know what kind of effort that takes. Again, I am in support of the project, appreciate the changes that have been made so far, and thank you very much for including us in this process.
Thank you, Gail.
Good evening. My name is Joe McCallum. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I work here in San Rafael. I've been here for the last decade. I grew up in Marin County, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the San Rafael Chamber. I'm here simply to support the project on behalf of the Chamber. The Chamber has a longtime-standing housing policy, supporting the increase in the number of housing units in this area. And we support over 600 employers in Marin County, 26,000 employees. For many years, and I could speak from this from a professional perspective as well as from the Chamber's perspective, developers have overlooked building in San Rafael because of the policies, costs, and associated risks. We now, as a community, have the opportunity with Northgate to reverse the tide and see development at a meaningful scale. I want to commend Malone Geyer for investing millions into the community to date, and that's property taxes that go back to all of us. With 45 acres of land, Northgate is the ideal site to add density and height and to produce workforce and market rate housing in San Rafael. Today, we have a mall in decline. It was in decline when I was a kid, and it clearly needs to be re-envisioned. The plan is an opportunity to transform this once-in-a-generation site into a thriving mixed-use center for existing residents and new neighbors to enjoy. We desperately need new housing in San Rafael, and these units will add to our supply, which is already constrained. There's no better place to add housing than Northgate. The size of it, the adjacency to the freeway, smart, the amenities, the existing infrastructure, it's all there from a commercial perspective. Not only will this project bring in new residents to our community, it'll create opportunities for longtime residents to downsize from their single-family homes. Northgate will also create new affordable housing units, which will be mixed throughout the project. This includes townhomes and apartments dedicated to low-income residents. These are homes for our essential workers who are commuting long hours in order to get to work in Marin every day as it is now. The Chamber will continue to monitor the project and collaborate with Malone Geyer to ensure the local business community is a voice at the table. The Chamber's goals are not only to have a project that boosts the economy, but to see a project realized which reflects the neighborhood and those living within it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. I would like to address a few of the conditions of approval. I support RGM's comments about retaining the in-loof fees for the parkland in North San Rafael. Also, the master use permit traffic studies that Shirley Fisher mentioned, after six-month studies after Phase 1 and Phase 2. And I support Sustainable San Rafael's comments about it is possible to have a project without including more greenhouse gas emissions by new gas hookups. I also wanted to ask that the city add a condition of approval that the owners and developers of Northgate Town Square agree to substantively participate qualitatively and quantitatively to a community-specific plan planning process for the Northgate Priority Development Area. San Rafael applied for a PDA designation in 2020 and received $797,000 as a grant in early 2023 from the Regional Transportation Commission, MTC. At that time, quoted in the Marin IJ, San Rafael's then community development director, Ally Judicee, said, "The goal is to establish some development standards as we look at development areas. We will be identifying mobility goals, equity goals, affirmatively furthering fair housing capital improvements, and transit." Regarding Northgate, she went on to say, "In an ideal situation, the study and development plan would have been completed before anything new was introduced to these areas, but we're going to be working with the community to come up with something that is best for the city." That was a year and a half ago, and to my knowledge, the city has failed to initiate any of that planning. Northgate Mall has an outsized footprint within the North San Rafael Priority Development Area, and that development should, and the Northgate development should contribute substantively to a specific plan that would address, for example, the community's concerns that the traffic access and congestion is not, findings are not adequate. Traffic, the traffic studies don't track with the experience of those who live here, live there. So I ask that the city work with Malone Geyer to, on a condition of approval, that they will participate in a plan, a specific plan to address the needs of the community into the future because they will be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle, and I've been a homeowner in Terre linda twice in the last 30 years and have raised a family there. I'm going to speak just without notes and from my observations. My son, who's 30, and all of his classmates that grew up in Terre linda are either still living at home or had to move out of the area. And with the affordable income level being for four family owners, rather, four people, up to around $157,000, I don't think that's really addressing the affordability issue. And I don't feel 10% is going to keep our youth that have grown up here and having the jobs and contributing. I did write an email comment on this. The others, living at the end of Delganado where we live, up against beautiful open space, I'm terrified at the idea of having escape routes getting blocked off. And I do want a huge development of affordable housing. At the same time, I can't sleep comfortably at night, where I do want the housing to go in, but not with the way the traffic situation already is. It's already been a dangerous , which you probably know, exits to and from the freeway. The other thing is, I haven't heard in the report around the light emissions. We now know that night light emissions are contributing terribly to our global situation of loss of birds and other habitats and how it all works together. I converted to induction stove, and I've been an avid chef my whole life, and it is a very easy transition. So I do completely agree that the few amounts of restaurants to be there should be converted over to induction stove. That's the direction, legally, we're supposed to be going in. I did have one other comment. I'm trying to... Oh, the other thing was, I haven't seen enough of the plans, but for the parking structures, for the, wherever there might be roofs involved, I'm not sure if there's solar panels for that, but I really want to support as much solar panels for shade structures and the electric system as well. The last comment is, I would love to see much more green space put into this design. When I look at the image, I feel like I'm looking at a separate city. I don't feel like it's Terre linda anymore. I think it should be called Northgate City or something else. And personally, as far as the architecture design, and I'm a big architecture aficionado, I know it's too late, but it should have had more of a mid-century modern look to go with the rest of the Terre linda area to still be called Terre linda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jenny Silva, and I'm the board chair of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. And I'm here tonight because we strongly support this project, and we urge you to move it forward. There are significant costs to Little A, and it's clear that the EIR is adequate. We are in a housing crisis. Several others have mentioned it, and we all feel it, even if we are comfortably housed. We feel it when we sit in the traffic backup to 101, when we can't find a new doctor because ours has retired, and new ones aren't willing to move to Marin because it is so expensive, when businesses close early or go out of business because they cannot recruit employees. And we are also in an eviction crisis. Evictions in Marin County are up 80% this year over last year. Every eviction is a tragedy and many times a further loss of our workforce. I want to point out that the folks that are in this room do not represent the overall community of Marin or even San Rafael. The speakers that are here tonight are, most of them have lived here for decades, and I will say, as one of them, we are old. And it is well-known that at community meetings like this, the speakers are overwhelmingly older, whiter, richer homeowners. And that is not all of San Rafael or Marin. And so I want to point out some of the conversations we had this summer. Our team met with Marin residents at over 100 events and spoke to over 2,500 people. I would say at least 1,000 of those were in San Rafael. We were at every San Rafael farmer's market. And we spoke to many families. We spoke to many younger people. We spoke to many renters. And we have overwhelmingly heard that the community is desperate for more housing. Many folks asked why the Northgate project hasn't started yet. What is going on with it? Why is this taking so long when we need housing so badly? A lot of people are really struggling. Residents that have worked here their entire life are now in the process of becoming homeless. I talked to multiple women in their 70s who have worked all of their life, went to college, went to Berkeley, who are going to become homeless in the next couple of months because they can no longer afford their rent. These struggling residents are not here. They're working their second job, or they're working the night shift, or they don't have the funds to hire a babysitter to be here. And I do think we should pay a lot of attention to the two speakers who have young children, both really support the project and want it to go forward. There is currently no market rate housing available for folks who make less than $65,000 a year in Marin. And our average job right now on Indeed is $50,000. So I have more to say, but I'm out of time. But I will just say, this is vitally important, and please move it forward. A delay is very costly for those of us that are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Smith. I am an attorney appearing here on behalf of Responsible Growth in Marin. My office, as you know, has submitted multiple comments on the project prepared by renowned experts in air traffic, in traffic, air quality, land use, and in other areas. I too will be speaking a bit about the overarching problem with the EIR, and that is the reliance on an improper and hypothetical environmental baseline. This baseline was used to compare and assess the project's potential impacts on traffic and noise and air quality, as you've heard here tonight. Numerous commenters have already described that this was wrong in the EIR because you are proposing to add 1,400 new residences, as well as 200,000 square feet of commercial space, including drive-through restaurants, and that, which would substantially reduce vehicle trips to and from the property compared to the existing mall. Looking at those earlier schematics, could this possibly be true? Absolutely not. So to get there, the EIR had to assume as the baseline, full occupancy and normal activity at the Northgate Mall, a mall that has been in decline demonstrably for almost 20 years. The final EIR dismissed facts and evidence and instead chose to rely on several problematic cases to justify this hypothetical baseline. But I need you to understand, this choice may have very real consequences for this community. Justifying the EIR analysis on case law rather than facts on the ground allowed the city to avoid identifying all of the impacts related to the project's increased traffic and in turn impacts on air quality, noise, evacuation routes, the fire department's emergency response times, and other concerns. I want to be clear that RGM does support this project, but it also believes that the city can and must require additional mitigation measures to deal with the project, the inevitable project impacts you've heard tonight, specifically traffic. So in order to do that, please... So in order to do that, please, you know, take note of the additional mitigation measures proposed by RGM's experts throughout the commenting period, and you heard some additional measures by Shirley tonight. This evening, based on the facts that we have before us now, RGM asks that the commission actually vote no on the two resolutions until the project is fully mitigated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gloria.
Good evening. My name is Pedro Pless. I'm a longtime resident of Terolinda. I support a mixed-use development project on the site. However, I would like to see more affordable housing because to qualify for one of the 10% affordable housing units, if I remember correctly, a family can make more than $100,000 a year. This does not address the housing crisis we have for people who make less than that. I'd like to speak to another few issues totally unrelated. The developer touts to many improvements to the project since its inception. While I really appreciate the changes that have been made, they do not address the elephant in the room, that the population of Terolinda would increase by a third, all on less than 50 acres. It's out of proportion. I think the city should not resolve to address its housing crisis with one project alone. The third issue is, I'm not an expert in this field, but based on my reading, the fire services study that is now included, attached to the PC staff report, did not evaluate the impact of increased traffic on emergency response times. And that is a serious error. And finally, I learned that the cinema operator pulled out of the project. So what is going to happen now with that space? And finally, we've all seen the movie, Where Is The Shade?, I would like to ask. We have hot summers and we need more shade structures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate your patience. I know everybody's been here for a long time. I just wanted to speak for a minute on something I haven't heard yet, which is loss of privacy for those of us that happen to be at what we consider ground zero. I'm Heather Shepherdson, and I am a resident of Terolinda, and I am one of the lucky ones that lives right at the intersection of Northgate Drive and Nova Albion Way. And so when we talk about three stories that are looking directly into my backyard and a letter that has now been acknowledged, that it wasn't acknowledged in the FEIR, it, it just seems a little convenient that the evidence that was presented, the FEIR says that these concerns had a lack of evidence and concluded that our house and others would not be greatly reduced in terms of privacy. So unfortunately, we actually did submit photographic evidence by pictures from our yard and our kitchen window, as well as drone shots from where the estimated third story will be looking directly into our property. So we would just ask that you please make sure that these additional letters that have been acknowledged are actually reviewed for evidence before we can consider it a final EIR. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ivan Glover. I have a couple of degrees in architecture and urban design, and I'm not going to pick too much fault with what's going on that's been proposed. Back in 19, excuse me, in 2021, I referred to part of this project as being an elephant in a bathtub. It's, it surprises me that here we are with a huge number of units going into a 44-acre property. I'm responsible for what's built at Quail Hill. The density there is 4.4 units per acre. Here, we're talking about 32.23 units per acre. That's incredibly dense. As I visualize this property after, with this proposal, I see a wall of buildings along Los, Los, Los Jesus Road, and I said to myself, that's way too high. These buildings need to at least drop off a floor, every one of them. Nowhere have I seen story poles. They say, story poles for six stories, just ridiculous. It's not ridiculous. You could put story poles on top of the old Sears building quite easily. People don't realize how high these buildings are. And I urge you, even at this late stage, unfortunately, beyond my control, I haven't been able to attend meetings this, this year. I was in Washington DC with my wife a few years ago, and an alarm went off. I know what it's like to forget fear. My wife did too. The last building I did before I retired was an apartment complex in Lafayette. I would not go above three, three stories above parking because it's dangerous. Earthquakes occur, engineers make mistakes, and we run a risk. I'm not going down that road again, and I hope you won't either. So thank you, and I appreciate what you've done, and it's like welcome home. I've done three projects in San Rafael, and I love this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Smith, and I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. And I've lived in Terolinda for, I think, over 25 years, but I'm losing track. At first, I'd like to say that we appreciate the many improvements that Merlangue have made to this, to this project over the years. I'm going to talk about construction mitigation measures. The final EIR unfortunately whitewashes many genuine concerns submitted in response to the draft EIR, not only by RGM but also by local residents who will be affected by this project for many years. Many of the final EIR's responses are in fact non-responsive. Some comments are simply ignored, and it hides behind legal language instead of addressing the real issues. We all know this project is going to go ahead in some form or other, but it shouldn't be at the expense of existing residents, many of whom have lived there for a very long time. The city needs to look after their interests too. All local residents are asking for are reasonable accommodations to mitigate the very real adverse effects this project will have on their lives, both during the years-long construction phases and when fully built and occupied. These mitigation measures, as suggested in RGM's draft EIR comments, are completely feasible and appropriate and have been required elsewhere, in contrast to the final EIR's total dismissal of them. In addition, well, sorry. Many comments have been dismissed regarding the inadequacy of the DER's skewed noise analysis. The FEIR simply dismisses them. In addition to a dedicated onsite construction manager to determine compliance with standards and requirements for noise, dust, and other air pollution, RGM requests financial assistance for the most affected nearby residents, the several houses very close to the site where the impacts will be the worst. So to replace single-pane windows with dual-pane windows to dampen noise, air conditioning for the years-long construction period during which windows cannot be opened due to the construction dust as well as because of noise. Any perceived extra benefit of those measures pales in comparison to the loss of quiet enjoyment of their yards. These residents will suffer not only from construction noise, up to 11 hours a day on weekdays and nine hours on Saturdays, but also from the ongoing increased ambient noise created by the huge increase in population and traffic concentrated in this very one, in this one very small part of Terolinda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Evening. My name's Steve Harris. I'm a carpenter, a field rep for Carpenters Local 35, and we are, I am here to speak in favor of it. This development combines retail housing, the project promises a, to bring numerous benefits to our community, and I am thrilled to share. This development will provide quality housing options and bring vibrant mix in shops and services, making it easier for residents to access what they need right at their own neighborhood. Additionally, the retail housing and combined, we're fostering a dynamic environment where people can live, work, and enjoy their community. Beyond the convenience, we're committed to local hire. This project will create jobs for construction workers, retail, ongoing operations, offering opportunities for our local workforce to grow. By prioritizing local hires, we're investing back into the community, supporting families, and strengthening our economy from within. This development isn't just about new buildings, it's about building a stronger, more connected community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, my name's Eric Kandec, and I'm a non-professional mic handler, but I'm a resident of Terolinda, been here about 22 years. I live a few blocks away from the mall, so I walk the neighborhoods for fresh air and drive to work in the morning. So I feel like I have a sense of what the atmosphere is. Probably two, two and a half sides of the four sides of the mall are one lane each. And when it gets bad, it gets bad, and it doesn't take much to get bad. So to suggest 1,400 units, 3,500 people, 2,500 cars will have no significant impact to the traffic, I think, well, other than the LSA who wrote the FEIR likes that report. The only other support I heard was adequate. On the other side, I heard outrageous, unbelievable, deceptive. So I don't know, I think the inputs need to be reviewed. Also, at the beginning of the meeting, the representative for the M Group lists about six or seven changes or modifications, legislative amendments, allowances, zoning changes, entitlement modifications, waivers. Seems like a lot of rules would have to change to the existing rules that surround the land use at this time. I don't think anybody said we don't support the new housing. Think it's just what comes with it, and that's where there's a difference. So I think that it's time to put a pause on accepting the FEIR. The smart train is another item that contributes to traffic when you least need it, frankly. So I think the history of the changes that have been made are a good faith effort, they suggest engagement. Just because you've done a lot to change from the starting point doesn't mean it's enough. So I'm suggesting that we put a pause on it and ask for some revisions to the inputs and other on-the-ground studies. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric.
Where are the, the chair? One additional?
Yes.
I'll make it so easy. Ditto, everything you just said, 100%, won't repeat it. And also, all the other people that actually had concerns about the traffic and, and the way the EIR was handled there, the baselines. My name's Lisa. I'm a 71-year-old person who's lived in Terolinda for 65 years, so I think I beat you all. And I, I have some problems with this. As one person just said, you're taking a small community and you're increasing it by one-third. That's a lot. And by the way, I've been a city planner my whole career, 40 years. I've worked for six different cities, and starting with Tiburon, but also in Southern California. But all along, I've been, I've had projects like this, I've reviewed EIRs, but you're put, somehow the developer is shoving everyone toward the end. It's like they, it seems like they had some community meetings and, but now, as a number of people have noticed, it's being shoved through, it's being hurried too much. And it's increased by 500 units to 900, to 14. It's way too dense, has not been adequately reviewed. And I recommend you vote no on the certification tonight, continue it for two months, address some of the EIR issues, and have another town meeting, you know, have another meeting to make sure everything is addressed because you are destroying our community. I would say 100 units would be adequate. And by the way, and by the way, Terolinda has 2,000 unaffordable housing units that are kind of behind the scenes. And I know where they're located, I can, if I wanted to work with staff, whoever, I can point you out each unit, each project, each apartment project that has plenty of affordable housing. I'm not saying there is a high, not a housing crisis, but Terolinda is being, has taken the brunt of it, and we don't need any more affordable housing. I mean, the amount, the amount they have, 10% is good, but we have too much housing in this project for a small location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Ms. Reeves, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Pam Reeves, and I'm tonight representing Marin Conservation League, who's, by the way, this year is celebrating its 90th year of existence. We'd like to thank the city of San Rafael for the opportunity to review and submit this comment on the final EIR prepared for the Northgate Town Square. MCL has reviewed the final EIR for alignment with its longstanding mission, which is to preserve, protect, and enhance the natural assets of Marin in a changing environment. The FEIR has been reviewed, taking into consideration its adopted policy positions. And I want to especially say around housing and greenhouse gas emissions, sea level rise, and full electrification. With this, MCL respectfully submits the following comments and requests. Please refer to our comment letter dated March 5, 2024, for the draft EIR report. We want to put in the public record that the response to our letter regarding traffic analysis impact to be unsatisfactory. Response disregards compelling evidence regarding traffic baselines from experts such as other commenters Phyllis Fox, PhD PE, and Daniel Smith PE. Now, this I, adding because of what I've heard tonight. The staff reported that the fire department has an evacuation plan for this area. Well, if it does exist, please show it to us tonight or condition the approval on its existence compared to the projected new households. I don't believe anybody in this area is aware of any evacuation plan existing. Three, tonight I heard the developer announced the dog play area as well as the dog relief area. We use artificial turf, and that it is obvious that this is needed, he said. This statement is not based on scientific fact. Artificial turf still uses water to clean it, chemicals to keep out the weeds, it's made up of microplastics that dogs will breathe, and they're made of forever chemicals, PFASs. Please request natural turf in these dog areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, I will now close the public comment period and take the project back to the commission for deliberation. Let's start by asking any outstanding questions that each commissioner may have of staff, and if needed, we can ask questions of the development team as well. Jill, why don't we start with you? Do you have questions?
I have a few. Thank you. I think my first question is about the greenhouse gas and the restaurants. I know the staff report referred to the California Energy Commission going to require, if they pass it, require that the buildings are electric ready. And I'm just wondering if the developers had already planned that anyway. So if it doesn't pass, in other words, are the restaurants that are going to be developed, will they be electric ready for the future? So if it doesn't pass, in other words, are the restaurants that are going to be developed, will they be electric ready for the future?
All of the electrical equipment that's going into the development is being sized for future electrification of commercial kitchens. That's your question?
Yeah, so if someone, if, you know, I know that we still have an issue with gas and induction and that we're not there yet. But if it's required, that induction is required by the state or by the city, can a restaurant convert to that easily?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. Then the agreement for the public square, does it include any guarantees that that will continue forever? In case someone else takes over?
Through the chair, is, are they included in the conditions of approval? We have a whole subsection that talks about that privately owned, public accessible open space and it does hold it in perpetuity as we can. And I'm looking over at our project planner, Heather Heinz, is there a year given in the conditions? I don't, but I know that we have it for as close to in perpetuity as we could legally allow.
I'm just looking for the exact language. And Mary or Nara, if you know that off the top of your head. Yeah, it says, condition number 95, it says, "Pope improvement shall be made available to the public in perpetuity for public purposes during agreed upon operating hours." So that's for the, the agreement.
For the agreement, okay, thank you. And then the parkland in Lufies, is there, are they going to be dedicated to parks around that area? Or is it first come, first served? Or how is that distributed?
The parkland in Lufies have to be utilized for parks and recreation purposes. Within the neighborhood is the language that the state law uses and neighborhood is not defined. The city's intention, I believe, and I'll turn to staff if they want to speak more to this, would be to utilize parkland in Lufies in the direct vicinity of the project. But there is not like a mandate or a condition in the project approvals that requires it to be used for, those fees to be used for a particular purpose.
Seems like it would be an appropriate question to have it go to the parks near Northgate. And then just one last comment, I mean, there's a lot, been a lot brought up about the traffic. In the staff report, it mentioned Caltrans planned improvements to the interchange for both west and east. And then the city's plans for the improvement on the streets. So there is some action going on to improve traffic in the area. Has that been looked at? I mean, it's nice to be able to say that this is happening, but do, do you know what impact that will have?
Through the chair, Director April Miller here from the Public Works Team is here and she can answer those questions or refer to other staff on those specific questions.
Thank you, hi. Yeah, there's several projects that are going on actively right now. So Caltrans is about to go out to bid for the roundabout project that's on the east side of northbound 101 and Freitas Parkway. There was actually an interchange study that was done by the Transportation Authority of Marin in the last couple of years that identified areas around 101 where there was just deficiencies. And so there's multiple projects happening. Caltrans is doing one side of the highway. The other side of the highway on the west side, the Transportation Authority of Marin is continuing, they're now in the, it's called the PID process right now. So they're doing more project development. So they're, we're, it's slowly moving along, but as you know, if it's around Caltrans, you have to go through a lengthy process. But there's also, there's also other projects going on in the area for bikes and peds. We have a South Marydale project, a North Marydale project. We have, we're doing schematic design on Freitas Parkway, multi-use path. So there's several other things happening in the area that the city's actively working on.
And the anticipation is that's going to help the traffic congestion in the area?
Yeah, the interchange study that you can find on the Transportation Authority of Marin's website goes over different, like both AM and PM peak hours and issues related to traffic and how doing different improvements would improve.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Commissioner Sade?
Thank you. So I just have, oh, my first question is, can you provide a short description of what the letters not recorded that the FEI covered? Just so we, I think there was one commenter, but just to get a general overview, were there any other additional letters? And can you just provide a brief description on what they address?
Well, I can, I, there's two of them. So the one mentioned by the speaker was about privacy concerns into the backyard area and included some pictures. I believe there was one from Smart. But I'm going to look to my colleagues to summarize the points in that letter.
Really, it was really TOD development and the ridership of the smart trains, basically promoting that this is, you know, a smart train station nearby. Then the third letter was Marin Transit regarding bus service.
Thank you. That's helpful. My next question is, well, I guess a lot of my questions are for the environmental design and signage package. I think our focus tonight has been on the FEIR. But I think we're overshadowing like 50% of the application. So some of my questions are related to that, so this is going to feel like probably a little whiplash for everybody. I guess my first question is residential, we talked about having no artificial turf on the retail except for the dog. I don't know what you call it, like the dog patch.
The dog park?
Yeah. But I did see that there is artificial turf allowed in the residential parcels. And can you explain why that exception was made? Or where the, why there's a division of the use of artificial turf?
I don't think that's intentional, but I'd love to ask the applicant's landscape architect, who I think is here.
It's on the landscape plans.
Yeah.
It's noted as P109 on the, on the legend.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keith Bittmeyer, Principal Landscape Architect with Urban Arena. And to be honest, I thought it was only at the dog park. I thought all the other locations were natural turf, including in the apartment.
Yeah, so P109 is listed as turf and that is in the, on like the seventh page of the PDF. And then if you go into each plan, it shows it's keyed as turf.
Was it possibly on the rooftops of some of the apartments?
No, not all of them. It's in every, it's like I saw in residential two, residential three, so they're, they're kind of distributed throughout. That, that keynote is distributed throughout the landscape plan.
Okay, well, and I apologize for that. It's intended to be natural turf.
Yeah, and I know that like the, so we have language in the conditions of approval to not have it. So I just want to make sure that we look at that and that staff address, can address that. And I, I may have read it incorrectly, but.
No, I just saw what you were, on one of the rooftops, there is P109 referenced. And I was looking at the way the condition is worded and whether that, if it adequately applies across the entire project. So give me a moment to find where that condition is.
Is it 128?
Yes, thank you. So we, we couldn't, especially if it's not the intent.
That's not the.
We could modify 128 to expand beyond.
Yeah, I think just specifically getting it like a general rule with the exceptions that we're making for the dog areas, that'd be great.
That'd be fun.
And then I guess the other question is, in, in landscapes, so you might stay here. In the materials legend for the site paving, a lot of the patterns and the colors are TBD. And we are seeing a lot of like natural tones and earth tones in the renderings and in the aerials. So I guess maybe it's not a question for you, but for staff, like how, how do we go ahead and make sure that we're basically approving the design for a project without, with some TBDs? So how is staff going to be able to track that those, that the pavings and the stamped asphalt is consistent with the color of the renderings? Cause I think the earth tones soften the area around the town center and provide enhancement to the environment, especially for community events and farmers markets, so.
So if it was a modification to what is represented, then it's at the director for something, something like that. If it's something we want to call out specifically, because it does say, there's a condition in here that says something to the effect of the plans moving forward shall be consistent with what, what has been represented in the plans and the meetings.
The plans say TBD.
Right, but the, but the renderings show an earth color, so.
Yeah.
But if there's something that is particularly, we want to make sure we're calling out. And we've done that with a lot of things, even though the plan shows that we've kind of tried to pull some of the things out to make sure that it doesn't get lost.
Yeah.
And so we could draft a condition that if there's some of those details, we want to make sure are front and center and don't get lost.
Yeah, just having a process where staff can make sure to implement what's shown in the renderings. Hi.
Yep, we're totally fine with the condition. What we do, we build a mock-up. So all of our materials that our contractors provide, not only in the hardscape such as pavers and this enhanced paving and, but also building materials, we do a full mock-up. So we have, so we can sign off at the contractor and the city can see that we're giving you what we've showed in the, in the, in the plans.
But there's no requirement, there's no like legal requirement for the city to say, you can mock up whatever. I'm not saying that you will, but I just think that like, we just need to know.
Well, we sign off, so we do the mock-up, we sign off on it, the city signs off on it, that's what we want, that's the color we want, that's the material we want. That's, you're giving us what we agreed in the design drawings. So we do, I'm fine with a condition saying that we'll do a mock-up and that the city signs off on it. That's to show that the materials presented are indeed what's being installed. And that's the standard procedure on all of our projects.
I understand that, yeah. I've worked on some of these kind of projects before, but I think just having the TBD and just knowing that like, we're going to go with natural tones, I'm sure you're not going to put purple or yellow or black, I hope. So I think that just making sure we track that is a small detail is, is going to make an impact to the project. And then the other questions I had were regarding the signage package. So I guess my first question, there's, there are a few questions, so maybe I'll ask all of them and then we can go through it as like a whole. First is why are there monument signs adjacent to pylon signs? And then why are existing signs remaining in place when pylons signs are being placed adjacent to them? So it's like we're doubling up on the signage. And then we also don't have any, like the renderings, the fly-through showed some signage, but we're not seeing the six 25-foot pylons that are being proposed. And you know, if you think about a project like Vintage Oaks or something comparable, we're just not seeing the number of that large of signs being provided on the site. And I, I don't think we need to eliminate all of them, but I do think that PB2 and PB3 are redundant and then PB, PA1 and PA2 are redundant. And I think we've already eliminated one of those, but I think it's worth looking at. And I think unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, we're, we're really, the community's focused on the larger issues. But I think we're losing some baby in the bath water with the large amount of signage that we have.
Happy to discuss that and actually happy to get applicant input on some of the strategy with existing signs or what, you know, what, some of the different signs, but noting, I think, did you say M2-1 and existing? Some of the existing and PB2 and existing and M2?
PB2 and BB, I'm talking about, well, there's two things. First, PB2 and BB3 I think are redundant and those are, those are the both of the larger 25-foot signs. And then PB1 and PB2, I believe are PA1 and PA2 are redundant, which are the large 25-foot signs. But then we're also seeing signage that's being placed adjacent to existing signage, so.
And that was intentional. The, the idea that we wouldn't have to destroy a sign is simply add a taller sign, you know, behind it. Or it's, they actually worked together, the two different signs. We worked with our leasing team to develop a sign program that we thought was necessary to lease, you know, the tenant space in the center. Especially since a lot of the tenant space is indeed located not on frontages and deep within the project and they, they require signage. And so the fact that there's not a lot of signage today, so we're seeing more signage being added. But simply because there's not enough signage today for the project. And I would say the amount of signage that we are proposing is consistent with the development of this, of this size. There's a lot of different entrances and a lot of different frontages. And so these tenants and the major tenants are coming in are asking for signage. And so we're simply trying to meet the need of the tenants who think that that sign is necessary to do business in this type of development. Happy to have the conversation about, you know, we really haven't, you know, we thought the sign was appropriate. There was a comment about reducing a pylon to a monument at one of the corners at Northgate Tribe, we're fine with that. So if we want to have a reasonable conversation, you know, with staff about what signs belong where. But we do think that our, our current proposal is, is reasonable. I, you know, we're not building freeway 75 footers or anything like that. We're simply trying to provide for a 47-acre site, reasonable signage at the entrance to the project. And 25 feet is, I don't think is excessive. I've seen excessive signs and I don't think what we're proposing is anything out of scale with the buildings that we're proposing.
Yeah, I don't think it's out of scale with the buildings, I just think the amount, I, I think that, I, I understand that the signage is needed. I just don't know if the scale, if monument, more monument signs can be used rather than the pylon signage. Because we're just kind of, I think if there's four of them, which I, what I think is adequate, I think there are, the locations that I'm showing, I, I think we're doing it without the plan.
Right.
But is there any way we can get the, the signage plan up?
Maybe Margaret.
Cause I feel like I'm talking in code.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nobody knows what I'm talking about.
Well, I'm having a hard time keeping up.
I know, I know, because I just did it through, I went through my notes, because I had, you know, I had to go through all of the 1,400 pages.
Margaret, on page four of the sign program is a good visual that shows the, the types and the locations.
Those are our two monuments.
Are those, yeah.
Still, still, still flipping down, hold on one second.
Okay.
Not in the, not in this, not in the presentation in the sign program. Can you share from the sign program?
That'll take another moment to pull it up from the city's website.
So, so is the concern, so the concern is not necessarily the design or height, it's quantity?
I think it's, I mean, I, yeah, I think the reality of the development is that we need to have large signage so that it stands out at the entrance. And I, I understand that. I just think that the quantity of the pylon signage. And I, I understand that. I just think that the quantity of the pylon signage is maybe can be reduced by two. It looks like we're already reducing it by one.
Right. And, and, and I would, for comparison, we just replaced a sign across the street at North Gate one. There's a brand new pylon sign over there in front of CVS across the street that contains the names of the new shop, the pad buildings that we built over there. These signs are in scale to, to that sign in terms of height. And so again, I don't think it's a height issue, but more than happy to take, and, and again, we have project entries off, off Marydale, off of, uh, you're coming off the freeway. There's another entrance. There's another entrance off North Gate Drive. So we're trying to hit our major entrances with signage, which we typically would use for identifying where tenants are. And we've got some through the site that are not the tall ones. What, what site, what's sign particular?
Like, so there's one right at Marydell and Los Colinas. And then just to the, I guess, plan west east of it, there's another one. So like at that point, I feel like one is adequate. And again, at where North Gate Drive and Los Colinas Avenue meet, there are two pylon signs. And I think that there's maybe, if you're driving up, you'll, you literally probably could see both at the same time. So I guess I'm looking at the, it's hard to see here, um, but it's the top on the top, right?
So out on the corner, out on the corner of Los Colinas and North Gate Drive?
There are two. Um, there's one at the very tip. You can kind of see with the PA one. And then there's right below it, there's PA two. So.
Yeah. So, so the one at the corner to the north is meant to be seen by traffic coming. Obviously it's a four-way intersection, but coming off of North Gate Drive into the project and also from Los Colinas, coming from like behind safe over there. And that's integrated into our plaza area out there that we have. So that sign is meant to be facing that direction. The other sign that's located at the drive, that's our main off ramp, southbound 101 is coming right off there into the site. That's the entrance they use. So we have another sign there to catch that traffic coming off the freeway, who won't actually be seen and looking at the sign a block, uh, up there at the other end of the section. That's why it's just, it's just trying to hit the entrances with the signage, which is where the tenants want them. So that it's the multiple entrances that require the multiple signage. So again, that's why they're, they're not super tall. They're meant to be designed to fit with the program that's over there, but that's what we're trying to do. So.
Yeah. I, I think that like, I get your point. I, I think that, um, like the one that's PA one, the one that's farther north is, that seems like it's secondary, not primary. And again, these are, these are my comments. So how they're, how they're addressed is I think staff's gonna need to look at it. But I forget which one was changed. PB four, which is covered by the, oh, on the end.
Is that by parcel 3 at that?
Yeah.
Rent Cheeto in Northgate Drive.
Got it. Yeah.
And, and we're, and we're fine with that reduction.
Yeah. And I think, I actually think that one's probably good. It's like, it's lone by itself.
And some of the signage at those locations are actually for the residential too. It's, it's lower residential signage going in those locations.
Yeah. And I think like, that makes sense. Um, I'm not sure if the one right at Marydell Road in Los Colinas. And then there's one like around the corner.
So, so we hired these experts that are experts in wave finding, how you get around large sites that have multiple phases and blocks and, and you know, and doing banner programs and, and all these things. And, and this is pretty standard fare for, for a mixed use project of this size to have well-designed, well-placed signage. I'd hate to go in there and say, oh, well, I'll get rid of that one. Cause I, you know, this has really been, it's a comprehensive plan. And we feel like we need, you know, if you want to talk about reductions or smaller size, I'm happy to have that conversation, but I don't want to go cherry picking through and say, okay, I'll get rid of this one. I'll get.
No, I just think that we haven't seen the representation in 3D. Like all the views that we have to the entries are showing the corners of the building. So it's hard for, I think that's why it's been missed.
I'll tell you what, they're built into our model. So when we do the fly-through, we do all the renderings. So all the renderings that you've taken that I've showed you, they're all pulled out of the 3D fly-through model.
There are renderings that are shown that on the corners of entries that don't show these pylon signage that we've looked at. I, I was looking at the renderings while you're doing the presentation.
Then I will, then we'll make sure to include them. We'll go put them in. We'll take rendered views from those different corners. And we're happy to have the discussion with staff about signage. By the way, why not? We've been having discussions about all the rest of the design features. We're happy to have.
Well, we just got the signage package like a month ago. So I think this is a, this is a new kind of, this is new input for us.
We'll be happy to work with staff on the development of the sign program with additional renderings and elevations.
That would be great.
Perfect.
And I mean, I have questions about traffic, but I believe that they're being addressed and they'll probably be, continue to be addressed tonight. So I'll, I'll keep it to signage and landscape.
Okay. Commissioner Sade, Commissioner Pravatali?
Okay. I'll, um, dive into the traffic stuff. So, and just let people know, uh, I represent the district that this project is going into, Terre Lenda. And as is required, I live in Terre Lenda. I live on Bamboo Terrace, um, uh, down this, up Freitas. And so I'm very familiar with the traffic situation down there. And I know this is not time for comments. I just wanted to give context. I guess, uh, I, Margaret, I just sent you an email, um, with an attachment, which is the, um, the TAM study that people have been talking about. Uh, and I was wondering if I could show, uh, a graphic from that TAM study. TAM is the Transportation Authority of Marin that did a study of the interchange. Um, and my, this is in context to a question that I'm going to ask April Miller. Sorry to, sorry to put you on the spot there.
Through the chair, I, um, I have an email from you at 11:40.
Oh, I just sent it just a moment ago.
Okay. It hasn't, it hasn't landed yet.
Okay. That's fine. Um, so what this, what, what this ship will show, if we're able to show it, is a cluster of collisions. At the intersection of Del Prisidia Boulevard and Freitas, um, which is the essentially connecting, the proposed project area to, um, the 101 South on ramp. And also bringing in traffic from, um, 101 South into the neighborhood. And Ms. Miller, I'm wondering, I mean, do you feel like, um, this study or any of the concerns that have been brought up about, uh, traffic mitigation, um, particularly combined with the fact that the EIR, um, is suggesting that no traffic mitigation fees are needed? Do you, do you feel like that is, that those, uh, are a concern for the safety of the citizens of Terre Lenda? And the potential for evacuation and just collisions on a regular basis?
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer.
Okay. So that's, I should have started with that. So are there any traffic engineers here representing?
We do. We have, we have an acting traffic engineer who is currently in the audience.
Oh, um, an acting traffic engineer.
His name's David Percy. He's from Parametrics. Um, he actually, his company worked on both interchange study and our local road safety plan that also identifies collisions.
Yeah.
Throughout San Rafael. And this interchange study, to my understanding, you know, does outline issues where you're discussing. And it does have proposal for some projects in the area.
Yeah. So my understanding is that there are three traffic circles proposed for the area. One, um, on the eastern side, and that has been, that's like you mentioned in the planning phase, that's been budgeted. I presume by Caltrans.
It's further along than that. They're actually going out to bid for construction soon. So.
Fabulous. So happy to hear that. So the other two on the western size side, um, do you know the status of those? Like have those been budgeted and committed to being constructed?
Uh, they are in the next planning stage. So these projects around Caltrans have multiple planning stages that are required in order to get far enough that you're going to be designing and constructing and getting funding. So the next phase has funding and so it's continuing to explore. There is a short-term and long-term scenarios in the interchange study, uh, that we're talking about. And so that's something when we get through this next phase, whether or not, you know, we're going to work with the Transportation Authority of Marin on potential funding sources to do the short-term project. Cause the long-term project, I think is in the upwards neighborhood of like 16 million dollars or something. I think that's the last study I saw. So it's gonna take a little longer to get funding.
Yeah. So there's no, it's not a sure thing then. I mean, that's, is that fair assessment? The first one, the first traffic circle is a sure thing. The second two or the next two are not.
Well, so the city council back in April did approve the local road safety plan. And the goal of that plan is to reduce the high collision network and reduce collisions, um, specifically high, high injury collisions and fatalities. So our goal is to improve San Rafael, you know, in the identified areas. And we're slowly going through and doing projects in different areas. We have studies that we're doing to help prioritize projects throughout San Rafael.
Okay. I mean, I mean, particularly considering, I mean, I feel like I'm leading the witness here, but like particularly conceding or considering that there would be no traffic mitigation fees from this project. How would that project that we're talking about on the, on the western side of, um, the freeway be funded? If, you said it's like, did you say 16 million dollars?
I threw the chair if I can jump in. So, um, there's been no determination by the city on the applicability of traffic mitigation fee. That's something we would do either at city council or building permit. Um, so.
About for this project?
Correct.
Well, it says clearly in the EIR that there would be no traffic mitigation fee.
Correct. That's, uh, that was a conclusion made by the applicant's consultant as, um, a part of a trip calculation that we've been talking about, uh, tonight. But the traffic mitigation fee is a separate calculation that has not yet been done and will be concluded prior to city council or building permit issuance.
Does, doesn't it seem like the city would, would not have, um, substantial evidence to use?
Probably not something that I can answer this evening, but we can bring back more information at the city council hearing.
Why can't you answer that? I'm sorry. What is your position? I apologize.
Oh, you're a Darty. I'm special counsel for the, uh, city.
Excellent. You're an attorney for, representing the city.
Correct.
Okay, great. So why is, um, why can't you answer that right now? You can't opine on it?
Well, I tend to keep attorney client privileged, um, information or things that we are studying, um, out of the public record. And the city's made no determination on this topic as of, as of this moment.
This is a public forum. I mean, to discuss exactly what we're.
That's my position. And if the planning commissioner or the city council wants to waive their privilege, they can do that. But I don't recommend that the city council do that.
Okay. So there is an opportunity to charge a traffic mitigation fee.
It hasn't, it hasn't been determined yet. And it will be determined at a future point. But that's not before the planning commission this evening.
Okay. Um, have there been any, in addition to, thank you, and I apologize for, um, any sort of, um, assertive, uh, words, um, if I, if I made any. So another question back to, I think, um, April. Are there any other plans for, uh, improving the traffic scenario around the project in addition to the, uh, the TAM plans? Uh, I'll just note that I noticed that in the aerial, um, video, it showed that, um, uh, the, I think it was North Gate Drive as being, like four lanes and I believe it's just two lanes when in each direction. Oh, sorry. Yeah. So it already, it seems like there may be, I mean, hopefully I'm optimistic that there may be some plans to expand, to increase the volume of traffic and, and add some more lanes around North Gate. But could you, uh, opine on that?
Yes. We have a lot of planning documents we're currently working on. Like I said, we just approved the local road safety plan. We've just applied for some grants in order to study more areas to figure out where we should focus our relatively small budget for capital improvement program projects. You know, we, we have recently received grants for the South Mary, South Marydale connection that is on the south side of the smart tracks to help with, um, you know, it's a Safe Rods School project. Cause right now, um, students walk on a dirt path. We also, you know, with this project, part of the conditions talk about, you know, $500,000 towards the North Marydale project. That's another project that the city is going to work to get funding on. So there's different, we have to apply for grants. We're trying to be competitive with grants. The local road safety plan is one of the key documents that's needed in order to apply for any of the safety improvement grants. And there are things identified in both the TAM study that we talked about and in the local road safety plan that would be good for us to apply for grants so that we could afford to do some of these projects.
Okay. So do you, do you have a sense of, do you just at a high level, what your budget is compared to, um, the projects you feel like are critical? Like how many, how much in grants do you think you would need to support this, the North Gate project? Just a rough number.
You know, I, I can't answer that. I mean, we're doing studies. I mean, this, this project has, you know, traffic signals already. It already has, you know, sidewalks. There's already a multi-use path going on on part of it. You know, that, yeah, that's not something that I have personally looked at compared to our documents on what projects we're doing in North San Rafael. We have a lot of projects going on in North San Rafael, a lot of projects we can, that are planned, not necessarily around North Gate.
Sure. I get it. Yeah, I agree. Um, and so my last question is just about the, an evacuation plan is, does an evacuation plan exist? I have not seen.
That's not something my department works on. So.
Okay. Is, does anyone know if an evacuation plan exists, like a current one or in the future one that considers the project?
So this was an item that was called out within the staff report, talking about the different Marin County emergency operation plans, along with the San Rafael emergency operation plan. This is actually handed through our fire department and our EOC. Is there one specific to North Gate, like for this project alone? No. But is there a specific one related to North San Rafael? Yes. It also depends on the scenarios. What they talk about is a playbook. So depending on the scenario, maybe earthquake, fire, other natural disaster. There's different playbooks and strategies that are applied. And that's really what, what the city has set up through our, um, both the county and the city. So that's the pieces we have in place and those are contained on page 29 of the staff report.
Yeah. Okay. So it's, it would be a, a future plan, probably.
Well, it fits on the scenario, right? I mean, you're planning for a disaster, you know, it really depends on the scenario. But there are strategies that have been adopted, um, through like the county and the city about how to approach that. So in essence, they create playbooks. And I actually participate in some of these through emergency operations center scenarios of like, let's test these strategies out. How do we approach this? What do we do? How does this move forward? So.
Yeah.
So it's one that's always, um, front of mind for the city.
Right.
But then there are processes that we're going to go through or continue to go through depending on what it is. So.
Okay. I get it. Yeah. And then just my last, um, sort of, uh, category of questions related to emergency response. I reviewed the letter from, um, San Rafael Fire Department. And, um, I noticed that it says, uh, they did, they did a study as we talked about. And it says the, um, the average time travel for the first unit to arrive was five minutes and 51 seconds in the study, exceeding the NFPA seven, 17, 10 standard of four minutes or less. This indicates that a significant portion of the North Gate property falls outside the ideal response time radius from the nearest fire stations. And then it also says, um, the valuation, the valuation also extended to the timely deployment of aerial apparatus, which I believe is like, you know, ladders, um, to reach, um, uh, tall buildings. Which is, it says, uh, the valuation also extended to the timely deployment of aerial apparatus, which is essential in areas with multi-story buildings and high fire flow requirements. The study demonstrated that while 20% of the San Rafael Fire Department service area meets the industry benchmark of a two and a half mile travel distance for aerial apparatus, the North Gate property is notably beyond this range. This suggests a potential gap in coverage for high-rise and high-demand structures with the, within the project area. So as we know, the, the, the study concluded that there not need be any, um, you know, additional changes. But it says, it goes on to say, it kind of contradicts itself and says, however, it's imperative for San Rafael Fire Department leadership and elected officials to consider these findings when negotiating potential developer offsets and exploring additional mitigation strategies. So I'm just wondering, is that under discussion as part of this development as well? Any sort of addition, actual addition to the emergency response infrastructure or personnel?
Uh, not, not as part of this project. Um, and that's really the, the findings from the fire department. We analyzed that, um, study that was presented.
Yeah.
We're in the process of actually doing a citywide study. We're in the process of actually doing a citywide study. That looks at San Rafael as a whole. That process, that project is still in draft. We're still evaluating those pieces for the overall fire operations. But we did conclude, at least through this project, that no additional facilities were required or needed, that we had sufficient facilities to support this project. Now, it's consistent with our general plan policy approach. And this is really where we identified policies for fire services that will have to analyze projects as they come as part of the sequel process. So we analyzed this project and found that no additional facilities were required. But we have additional projects too that will continue to do that when we look at the ability to provide those services. That's why the citywide approach has really been focused on.
I see. So perhaps when more projects are added, a new fire station might be needed in Terlinda. Is that a fair assessment?
Potentially. But it's also really the question about fire apparatus, because that's what that was specific to, that fire apparatus.
Oh, right.
So. And then the other opportunity too, and this is something that's been identified by staff, is potential relocation of one of our fire stations to be more central in the one-on-one corridor versus where it is contained right now in Delgado. So, so there are other multiple option, opportunities that exist. But there isn't a prescribed one. That's why we're continually deciding to say, what would be those optimal opportunities?
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Those are all my questions. Okay.
Yeah, Mike mentioned that the apparatus, I think, is what you're referring to.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Pravatelli, Commissioner Mercado.
I have a couple of quick questions, I think. There was a reference to a transfer of standards in the project. Are there, are there limits on that? I don't remember if I saw that or not.
I think what you're referring to in the PD standards, it does talk about being, considering across the whole site.
So the whole site capacity or limit is how it's evaluated? And then it can be disseminated amongst.
Yeah, and we're looking at like parking or density. So we looked at the density for the whole site, but obviously there's not housing on the whole site.
Yeah.
So those are the things that was covering.
And then the next question was on the private, the public. I was wondering how that's maintained. Who's maintained that?
The, the applicant, the property owner would, and part of those POPA agreements would have ongoing maintenance. As well as, I believe we have conditions in, in here also about maintenance of the streets and the bike and ped facilities and those things as well. It's all maintained by the.
In agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the next one was, there's sort of a reference to like a parking overflow idea. And I don't remember seeing that. But is there sort of like a larger parking area for guests? Sort of the customer, like, I don't really know how to kind of catch the question. But really sort of more of this buffer parking area. I've seen in other projects where you have the parking adjacent to the building or for that use, but then you sort of have like a buffer or cushion area for parking.
Yeah, I mean, this project, all of the part, surface parking is available across the site. Each of the residential has then their own private parking that's in the internal parking garages or in the townhomes. There's some surface parking as well as some garage parking.
And then the last question is, I know we've seen in other projects, the sort of post-development or maybe post-CFO or post-building permit, traffic monitoring. Was that a condition imposed on this project or part of how this is contemplated?
It is not a condition on this project.
Yep. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. I have, my, my fellow commissioners, as always, have been thorough. And as, as the economist on the panel, I've, I've sort of isolated my questions to do with the fiscal impact study. Is there somebody here who can speak to the fiscal impact study? As somebody who has done that for, for other developers and sat through planning commission meetings for hours and then gone home without being asked a question? I thought I would make sure that person didn't feel left out. Is, is there somebody?
Our, our economist, Libby Seifel, was actually, was unfortunately able to, to cover this meeting tonight. But, you know, I've actually worked closely with her on this preparation of this study and report. So.
Okay.
I'll be handling whatever questions you may have of that.
Okay, well, my, my primary, I primarily have two questions. One is, there's a dramatic reduction in commercial space. Very dramatic, yet an increase in retail sales and in retail sales tax receipts. And I'm just curious as to how that came about.
I believe they, they, the tax was actually all taxes, not necessarily just retail. So I think it's a combination of items of property tax. But there's also sales tax increase related to online purchase and sales from the residents there also.
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm looking specifically at table seven A. That is just refers to onsite retail. And towards the bottom, it has total annual taxable sales under existing development at sixty-one point nine million. And once twenty forty, the plan phase one and two are, are placed, it'll be sixty-four point seven million. So about a three million dollar increase in, in onsite taxable sales. With about a five hundred thousand square foot reduction in commercial space.
I don't want to dive too deep in this one just because I don't have it in front of me. So let me pull that up and then we can go there. If you have other questions, when I, we'll come, circle back to this one. But let me pull it up and I can look at that particular figure.
Okay. The, the, the other question that I'll ask has to do with, there's, there's an implicit assumption throughout the report that average income and hence retail spending in, in the new development will be the same as throughout San Rafael as a whole. And I guess that, that assumption surprised me just a little bit. That might be, might be perfectly reasonable, but I thought I would ask.
So Commissioner, can you go back to the first question about what, what page you're on and what?
Sure, the first, first question is appendix table seven A on page A seven. I, I don't need to hold everybody up.
Sure.
And it's not going to be determinative in, in the way I vote, probably.
Okay. If you'd like, I take a recess, I can pull up that particular piece. But I'm, I'm on A seven now, so I want to just understand your, your basic question. I try to answer it the best I could, so.
Sure. So if you, in the, in the top half of the table, the, the total line, just below, just above the horizontal line, you see the dramatic decline in commercial space from seven hundred sixty-six to two hundred and nine thousand square feet.
Okay.
And then in the box below that, the, the last line has total annual taxable sales. And there's a, a, yeah. Five percent increase in taxable sales. Sixty-one point nine million up to sixty-four point seven.
Yeah, I think it was the, we talked about this, it's really about the type of retail that gets put back in. There's different retail positioning that, that comes in for the upgrade in the mall tenant and the applicable sales. So I think there was an estimate that was done for that. But for that particular question, I do, I do wish the economist was here.
Okay, understood, understood. And then the other question is, do we, do we think that average income of tenants in, in the development will be the same as throughout San Rafael? And San Rafael being a majority homeowner. And very often in a town, the incomes of renters will be lower than, than that of, of the homeowners. I'm just wondering if that was, if that assumption was justified with data or?
Yes, it was. I think we look at the demographic base of, of San Rafael, the average household income. We broke it down that way. We also have to look at the rental, have different kind of expenditures or, I guess disposable income is different compared to a homeowner.
Yeah.
So there, there are other factors that came in. But I do think some of the gains, we look at overall sales tax, actually came from really the online sales standpoint. There's an added piece with additional households and their spending capabilities.
True.
That they'll, there's added sales that we get from all our tax measures that are actually in here in San Rafael.
Right, but, but not for these folks above and beyond the existing residents?
Or rephrase one time.
Well, so, so there's, there's an online sales bump from, from these folks being here.
Yes.
You get the same online sales bump from me?
There's additional households that come in or population piece. So then we also have some local tax measures where we actually have additional sales bumps from that end.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Michael.
Sure.
And if none of the other planning commissioners have any more questions?
Sorry, I have one more question. I wanted to sort of close out. I mean, obviously, the traffic studies and the EIR and what, that's the biggest, by far the biggest issue. So I just wanted to give April Miller another opportunity. Could you describe sort of like the, the city's due diligence process for the traffic study and the, and the EIR? The traffic section of the EAR and its conclusions?
We actually have our, uh, project traffic consultant here. And he's probably the best suited to speak to that.
And does he work for April though? I mean, I'm not putting, asking her to.
He's a, he's a consultant that.
Oh, I see.
Worked along with our environmental review team.
Okay, great. Is that you, sir? Okay, thank you. Yeah, could you describe your, your process?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm David Parisi. Because you have a vacancy in the city, I'm the acting traffic engineer for the city.
How long have you been in that place?
Gosh, for about six, eight months, something like that.
Okay.
I'm also a Marin resident and have been for, for twenty-five years. I'm a registered traffic engineer. And I work for a firm, as a, as the director Miller said, called Parametrics. And we were hired to do peer reviews of traffic studies. We also worked on City San Rafael's local road safety plan and the TAM project study that you've been asking about for the interchange. So quite a bit of experience. I'm also a Marin resident, as mentioned before. I think what I'll do is answer some of the questions that come up, came up regarding baseline.
Okay.
Questions. And those questions pertained around three things. The use of a baseline case, assuming that the mall can be fully occupied, instead of assuming vacancies, which was just prior to the publication of the notice of preparation, which was at twelve percent vacancy at that point in time. Second was, point is the use of traffic counts conducted intersections in September twenty twenty-one, which again was a notice of preparation. And the third question that came up several times was the use of trip generation rates from the Institute of Traffic Transportation Engineers. So let me handle these if it's okay, one at a time. The first is the use of baseline case, assuming that the mall can be fully occupied. The baseline case in the EIR, assuming full occupancy, or should I say almost full occupancy? Because typically malls vary a little bit, it's called rolling vacancies, was used because North Gate Mall has been entitled and may be fully reoccupied for retail use at any time in the future. So that's, that's the reason for that. The occupancy assumption was not based on hypothetical operations, but instead on actual historic operation of the mall. The mall had operated at what would be considered a full occupancy, again, with some rolling vacancies over time for years, with typical vacancies hovering around three percent just before the pandemic. Based on this approach, it was concluded that the proposed project would result in about three hundred and forty fewer PM peak hour vehicle trips with the project in the twenty twenty-five master plan and about eight hundred and ninety lower trips in the twenty forty vision. And again, a PM peak is the critical period on nearby streets and intersections throughout, throughout Terlinda. But it also should be noted that even if it was assumed that the mall's baseline had a twelve percent vacancy, that that was, if that was, had been used instead, the proposed, proposed project would still generate fewer vehicle trips during the peak period, about a hundred and sixty fewer, even if there was twelve percent vacancy in the twenty twenty-five master plan and seven hundred fewer vehicle trips in the PMP hour in the twenty forty vision plan. And really, the reason of, of this is because residential uses generate fewer PM trips than commercial uses. Another way to look at it is that for residential uses, many of the trips are, are one-way trips coming home. But for commercial uses, a lot of those trips are actually two-way trips coming in, in and out during a one- or two-hour period. So that's one of the reasons you're seeing a reduction in vehicle trips. The second point is about the use of traffic counts that was conducted for the baseline conditions in September of twenty twenty-one. The counts were conducted in twenty twenty-one, again, when the, when the mall had a twelve percent vacancy rate during the pandemic. These counts were compared to counts taken in twenty fifteen for the North Gate Walk project. And those counts, again, the twenty twenty-one counts were only three percent lower than those taken for the North Gate Walk project. Traffic counts haven't varied much in Marin. There hasn't been much growth. It's been pretty flat. So that three percent difference is, is acceptable. We feel that as for the peer review, the twenty twenty-one counts do a good job of describing existing conditions in the EIR. But the twenty twenty-one counts were not used for comparing the twenty twenty-five case or the twenty forty case. They were grown, but they were factored up based on San Rafael's transportation analysis guidelines and also with input from the Transportation Authority of Marin's travel demand model. So they're inflated. The twenty twenty-one counts were inflated by about three percent to twenty, to replicate twenty twenty-five conditions. In the twenty forty case, the, the twenty twenty-one counts were increased by eighteen percent. So the baseline conditions were increased, if that makes sense. And the third point that was brought up several times by folks in their written comments and a couple tonight, was the use of trip generation rates from Institute of Transportation Engineers. So the Institute of Transportation Engineers, every couple of years, updates traffic rates for different types of uses across the United States. And they have hundreds and hundreds of studies for different uses. In the vehicle trip generation for the mall, at typical, you know, when it's mostly fully at occupancy rate, was estimated to use in standard rates published by Institute of Transportation Engineers or ITE for shopping centers. Likewise, they were used for IT, IT rates for use of the multifamily component of the proposed project. And these were used to really have consistency between the, and the study for comparative purposes and to fairly compare the scenarios. It should be noted that the IT rates used for the existing shopping center were based on rates collected by IT for hundreds of retail uses across the United States, including other shopping centers that may or may not be a full occupancy as shopping centers can be, and that's how they operate. The average rate applied implicitly includes the average retail occupancy across all data collected, as IT does not discard data points based on occupancy levels. And last, even if the September twenty, twenty twenty-one occupancy levels were lower than the IT rates assume, the IT rates are consistent with historic occupancy rates of North Gate Mall buildings that could be reoccupied for retail uses in the future. So hopefully that helps answer some of the, the questions about the baseline conditions.
Yeah, that answers it.
Yeah, so I want to ask, I guess, a little bit of a clarifying question.
Sure.
So what the analysis does is it compares what's likely to happen with the new development with traffic flows that have been approved by the city. In, in effect, through, through the approval of the original mall, the city has in effect said, we're okay with the amount of traffic that would come from a fully functioning, built-out mall. we're okay with the amount of traffic that would come from a fully functioning, built-out mall.
Well, not that the city's okay with it, but that's what would be expected.
Right, but, but the city approved the mall, right? And hence, that's, that's the baseline, because the city approved the mall with the expectation that it would be fully functioning.
Right.
And so that's why that's the baseline. It's not a matter of estimating what do we think will happen relative to current conditions.
That's correct.
Good. Thank you.
I just have one other um question. So there's a, a table, um, one in the um Traffic Operations Study. It's titled Collision Rates for the Study Intersections.
Mm-hmm.
And um, for uh, for two intersections that are in close proximity, Los Colinas Avenue and Northgate Drive and Freitas Parkway and Del Prisidio Boulevard, they both have um collision rates that are high relative to the statewide average. The statewide average is 0.24, uh, what is it, collisions per million vehicles, where um these intersections have 1.14 and 0.95 perspect, respectively? And I'm just wondering, does, does that suggest that that area is in need of a safety improvement? In your mind?
That's, that's a really good question, and since we did manage the Local Road Safety Plan, you know, the uh stretch of Freitas is on the High Accident Network.
Yeah.
In, in the county, and there are a couple of locations, including these, that are definitely uh, that, that should be focused on. The Local Race Safety Plan has some uh ideas for improving these intersections, short-term and longer range as well.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, just to point back to that TAM study that was mentioned previously as well.
Yeah.
You know, there are some ideas, including in, enlarging the signal heads from 8 inches to 12 inches with backplates on them. Uh, uh, realigning some of the lanes.
Yeah.
The roundabouts are just one idea. Another is to just tighten up some of the intersections, both at Del Prisidio and at Northgate, uh, because they have slip lanes and things like that, which were probably designed in the 50s or 60s. So there's a lot of new techniques to improve safety.
What would, what would go into, I know that we're getting into some speculative arguments here, but what would, what would be needed to double the um, the on-ramp, the number of lanes on the on-ramp uh going south, like, for instance, there's, I think, one lane going south off of Freitas.
When you're heading eastbound to take a right and go southbound?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Is that like a Caltrans thing, or?
Yeah, that would be a Caltrans thing.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions from commissioners, now we will turn to uh discussion. Would anybody care to lead off in discussion?
Sure, I'll lead off. Thank you for all the public comment. I think, I, I've probably been on this project the longest from everyone on the Planning Commission, so I appreciate it. A lot of familiar faces with great comments. I think what jumps out at me is I don't know how much the city has heard, but I think you've raised great comments, and I think there's a discrepancy between the frustration of what's happening and maybe what has to be done in terms of what's required. So I just want to acknowledge that. I think there's great questions tonight that were raised. I, I'm leaning in favor of this project. I don't think it's perfect, but I think it's a step in the right direction. I think staff has some direction based on what needs to be done in terms of this project being phased out and working with the developer and addressing the community. I think some of the issues with construction, monitoring, engagement, having that community outreach is going to be really critical for this project to succeed overall. So to me, that's one of the things that has jumped out throughout what I've heard tonight, is that continued community engagement, uh, and really trying to make this project incorporate itself into the city and not be its own sort of isolated development. Uh, I was really happy about the townhomes phasing out the affordable housing. I thought that was a really bad idea originally. I think it segregated the project. I think making that inclusionary housing part of it spread out is going to be much better. I think the privacy issues with the neighbors have been addressed better with sort of the step backs, reducing the mass. Again, a really good design idea that I thought was really well done. I think the traffic's just really tough. It's a really tough issue. I think you have what's required, and what we feel. Living here, I feel that same frustration of, how do you address that? But I think those concerns have been addressed, at least in my opinion, so I put that out there. Yeah, that'd be my first points to start for the discussion.
Okay. Thank you all.
Sure.
Anybody else?
I guess I'll go. Um, yeah, I love this project. I want this project to happen. I was actually, um, as I think, hopefully people know, but maybe they don't. I cleared this, cleared this with the city before I joined the Planning Commission. I was um on a, a design committee with Responsible Growth in Marin that helped propose this idea in the first place. And so I was, I'm, I, and as I mentioned, it's uh my neighborhood. Uh, I'm, many neighbors, even though it's very big, many neighbors are very much looking forward to an improvement in this mall. The traffic, yeah, that is a huge problem. Oh, my gosh. Um, and I, unlike Aldo, I'm leaning against um voting for uh the acceptance of the, the EIR and the um, and the resolutions, because I feel like it's a safety issue that we need to deal with. And unfortunately, um, the, I think the city, I mean, with all due respect to legal counsel, I think the city is setting themselves up for failure in negotiating a traffic mitigation fee that is um going to be substantial enough to make any difference, and relying on grants is like rolling the dice, um, unfortunately, for this. So I feel like we should take the time um to adjust the EIR and adjust the traffic studies. I don't know if we need more empirical evidence, like more actual, um, you know, lines put on the, the streets to count the number of cars. I think there's probably the data out there already, right? But instead of using, um, you know, let's, let's do a better job to actually predict the number of um, of uh, of cars and um, and then use that in the EIR um to try to get some traffic mitigation fees to help this area. So that's the, that, that's my position.
Okay. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Sada?
I'll go.
Yeah. Thank you. I first want to thank staff and all the consultant teams and developer team for the um tremendous amount of work that it took to put together all of this, all of these studies over the last four years. Excuse me. Um, I mean, thousands of pages of work and um, public hearings, public study sessions. I think there's been a really good faith effort, um, and I trust the, you know, the people that work for our city and the leaders in our city, um, because I think they're led by the right people and they have the right intentions. So um, that's just my opening statement, but um, I think the EIR is adequate because it meets the letter of the law. We know that traffic is an issue throughout the county, North San Rafael, and our required infrastructure projects. We've, this TAM study show that, and I think that the EIR for the project and the larger TAM Marin County Caltrans studies are interdependent. And we need to rely on the commitment of the city and public work so that there's a good faith effort to ensure our community will see upgrades to our roads and highways. I, I sincerely believe that we're all working towards that. I know that the city, um, the city knows that public trust is critical to meeting arena numbers and reaching housing equity in our city. So this is like the first of, this is a first big project. This project is not going to solve our housing crisis. But if we don't, if, if we look at each project through the lens of that, it's never in the lineup. But we have to do piece by piece, and we're not going to get the future pieces unless we get this piece done. And the city knows that, so, and Public Works knows that, so I think that we have some guardrails there. Um, I also think we're missing the larger issue, which was brought up by um one of the commenters, that the amount of workers commuting into Marin is immense, and that'll be mitigated through providing housing, adequate housing within our, within our city. I think that we're right. Like, there's a lot of people that are frustrated. I would be, I'm frustrated too with driving. I have two kids. I have my mom that lives in Terre Linda. I have my sister that lives in Terre Linda, my, my granddaughter. So I'm in that area, in and out of that area quite a bit. It's not just Terre Linda. It's, it's the whole city. It's a county-wide issue. Um, but we can't ignore that our population is aging and our economic vitality is under threat. Canal Alliance is making it a top priority for housing equity. I mean, their community, the city is making it a priority. This is sustainability issue. People talk about density. 85% of Marin is open space. In order to protect that open space, we need to add density. This is, housing is not, I know I'm going into greater issues, but I think that the opposition in this project needs to see that we, our generation, the generation under us cannot purchase housing the way that past generations have. There's not that privilege. And I think that increased density will reduce greenhouse gas and the use of resources, as well as like the, when we cut the commuters, we're also commuting, we're also reducing greenhouse gas. Um, if we don't approve this project, Northgate will continue to um deepen into blight. I mean, Commissioner Pravat Ali brought up a shooting, I think it was like six months ago or a year ago at the mall. With the, the mall is going into blight, and I think we all need to ask ourselves, what will happen if we don't have this project? It'll become homeless encampments, and it'll actually increase crime. And I think somebody said it would actually increase crime if we built it, but I think it's also a public safety issue that we continue to address parts of our city that are degrading. This is not a perfect project. I think the passing of Residential Six is out of scale. Um, I do think that we need to look at, the signage was really over, the package was kind of overlooked because of the larger issues. We got that a month ago, and I think that this, that needs to be addressed by staff or through meetings. Um, and I, so I think we need to provide the following um conditions of approval to um pass this along, which would be, I think, I have this listed somewhere. One is um making, ensuring that um, where did I write this? That it's Condition 128 is, is updated to ensure that like the turf language is up to date. Um, I think we also need to add a condition that asks staff to work with the development team to look at the signage package um closely. And um, add one more thing. Oh, here we go. And a condition that provides staff the ability to ensure the paving schedule and the landscape plan is completed in alignment with their renderings. And then I, I just want to end lastly with a larger issue, and this is not maybe project-related, but this is related to our community. Our housing crisis was created by um bad policy, policy based in fear and hate and all these other things. We can solve it through pol, good policy. Um, I think somebody said, you know, did they consider us when they developed this plan? Well, the land in Terre Linda was sold by a Mexican land grant to the developer to develop this. So the people that are privileged to live there in single-family homes, I mean, are, have, I think we have to ask ourselves, did the development in the 60s consider the coastal Mewoc and the Tamalagusto tribe? The open space and the natural beauty of the area? By, by not asking ourselves that question, we're, we're really not allowing our generation and future generations to thrive in Marin. We're not going to have any economic vitality. There's not going to be jobs. We're going to go into blight. So I think this is a social justice issue, an economic issue, and a sustainability issue, and I, I just, we need to continue to allow development in Marin so that we can provide housing equity.
Thank you.
I wanted to also add the induction cooking.
Could I just mention one thing? Yeah, that was very eloquent. Thank you for the statements, and I wholeheartedly agree with your, particularly your last comments. Um, I didn't mention that there was a shooting, but there was an attempted a, a child abduction
Okay.
uh, by a homeless person that resulted in a lockdown of the neighborhoods around the area. So just to, wanted to correct that.
Thank you. I was, I was going off memory on that one. Not good memory.
I just um want to compliment the community that came out tonight, as well as the developers. This is a huge project with a lot of moving parts. And I know traffic's an issue, but I don't think it's a, it's a done, the traffic sounds like it's continuing to be worked on. The problems are continuing to be worked on with Caltrans and the city, and, you know, we've got to keep moving forward. I know that in every area in San Rafael, as well as Tiburon and Mill Valley and Sausalito, we have huge traffic problems. We just got to keep working on it, and I don't think anybody is dismissing the problems. Um, but I do know that Northgate is dying, and we need to do something. And, and these developers have been working on this plan for four or five years and have listened to the community. Nothing's perfect, but I think um, I think it's a good plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbie. Um, and I will uh finish up by saying um, I spend a lot of time up in, in Terre Linda. My permanent residence is not in Terre Linda, but I do spend a lot of time up in Terre Linda. Um, I spent two years uh driving my son to, to Terre Linda High School and dropping him off in the morning, um, picking him up in the afternoon, so I'm, I'm aware of, of the existing traffic issues. Um, and I think all of us are sympathetic to the concerns of those in, in the neighborhood. And, and before I go further, I do want to thank everybody uh who came out tonight to speak uh and to, to express their view about the project. Um, I, I think we are living in a period where um we, we do need this development. Um, and I'm, I'm going to, I, I had a little diatribe about a previous development that I won't resurrect, but, but part, part of what we're experiencing is that for a long time, we've been letting, we've been pulling a rubber band apart, and, and, and we've gotten to the point where we let go of one end, and that hurts the other hand. Um, and, you know, this, this development, it, it certainly feels like it's going to hurt to a lot of people. Um, and as one who spends a lot of time up there, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to that. I'm worried about the traffic. I'm worried about evacuation plans. But as an economist who has worked on projects like these, um, I know that they seldom turn out, the, the consequences of them seldom turn out to be as bad as they first appear. Um, you know, for, for instance, people who are living in the new development, if, if traffic really, really gets as bad as I think people are afraid it's going to, well, people who have to drive to work won't want to live in those developments, so we'll get more people who don't drive to work and have just one car, use Uber or Lyft. Um, and, and I wasn't going to mention it, but I will, you know, hopefully autonomous vehicles will become a thing in the not-too-distant future, and that will help with the traffic issue. I think traffic will become an issue. I think if we wait on this project until we have a solution for a traffic problem really of unknown magnitude in the future, um, that's not the right thing either. Um, I have faith in TAM. Uh, I have faith in our city council and city government that when things get, get to a point, I have faith in the Terre Linda population that they will voice dissatisfaction with the increase in traffic in the neighborhood, and that will prompt uh mitigation. And so I, I have that faith. Um, I, 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 I think this is a good project. I think it is startling to the neighborhood. Um, but, but I think that's going to be okay. I don't think it will take very long before it's been accepted, before the new amenities that are available will be, will be appreciated. Um, so, so I'm in favor of the project. Um, uh, I, I, I like the conditions that you've offered. Um, and I, I'd like to offer a, a couple of more. One, um, is that the issue of privacy um be discussed, be considered a little bit more carefully. Um, as was raised in, in the letter that we were made aware of today. Um, I worry, um, I I worry, I, I don't know, but it was expressed. And so I'll, I'll express the worry that, you know, the, the externalities, if you will, from construction be minimized, the real efforts be made to minimize the impact. There will be necessarily an impact on the neighborhood, but that, that every effort be made to mitigate that externality on the neighborhood. And I guess, I guess that's, that's what I have to say. I think it's, I think it's a good project for the neighborhood. I think it's a good project for Marin. It will reduce commutes in and out of San Rafael. And that will be some of the mitigation of the traffic. But, you know, I, I have concerns. I'm sympathetic to the concerns that have been expressed tonight. But I'm, I'm hopeful that in the event that this project does go through, that city council, TAM will be responsive to mitigation that needs to happen in the future. So at this point, if there is, is there more discussion?
Should we kind of collect, go through the conditions with staff?
Sure.
Because I'm probably, there's probably more, I feel like. I'm not going to, if you have one, right?
Commissioner, we, I think we may have them all. If you would like Heather Hines to read them into the rec, to read them right now. I believe we've captured all of the proposed additional conditions or modified conditions and then a motion can be made, including those.
Yes, please.
Let us know if we've missed anything.
That would be terrific.
And granted, we always reserve a little bit of word smithing once we're not 11 o'clock at night sitting here trying to create conditions, but the intent. So we had requested at the beginning, as part of the presentation, we had requested modifications to 92 and 158. I'm just going to read those in. Modification to 92. Completion of each POPA improvement shall occur prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy for development within the construction area, e.g. on-site parcels or building sites located adjacent to such POPA improvements as depicted in the attached exhibit number II and described in condition number 91. And then condition of approval 158, consistent with SRMC Section 1418160I. Parking lot screening and landscaping revised plan shall show that the top level of parking structures utilizes light-colored, high albedo paving material reflectance of at least 0.3 or utilize shade structures, photovoltaic carports, landscape trellises, or trees to achieve at least 50% daytime shading. Then we have modification to condition 128 to broaden the prohibition on faux turf beyond just the Times Square or Town Square to reference across the project with the exception of pet relief areas or dog park. And then modification to 118, which is calling for the all-electric construction with the exception of the commercial kitchens to add that all commercial kitchens shall be electric-ready. And then we had, bear with me. We had a, a suggestion for a new condition that would read as part of any first building permit or site development application. The applicant shall present specifications regarding materials, colors, et cetera, to demonstrate consistency with the materials, colors, et cetera, in the approved plans and renderings for city review and approval prior to issuance of first building permit. And then we also for sign, the sign program, something to the effect of the applicant shall work with staff to revise the master sign program to consider reduction in the number and size of pylon signs to reduce duplication of signs at project entries where
I have a question. Do you think, is there any room to consider the request for follow-up traffic studies after, for, say, the first six months of phase one? And see, after phase two, which, long time away. Would that be part of the condition or?
Yeah, I'm a, I feel like we need to have a discussion about that, probably with the developer with our traffic, because we need to, I'm not exactly sure what we're.
There's, so I guess there's precedent for Locklomond Marina Project and BioMarin? Are you familiar with those projects?
Yeah, and we, I have looked at those and we can, we can, we can take it as a recommendation for prior to going to city council, consider
Okay.
Something to that effect. I just don't think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, team, but I've, that's a little harder to draft on the fly because when you do look at those conditions in the Locklomond resolution, which is also, I don't know if it was just, I don't know what year that was, but it, it's detailed and it has very project-specific. So what transfers over to this project? What's similar, what's different? But to the fact that we can look at that before going to council.
Okay. Yeah, a recommendation.
To consider that.
I, I think then my, my two suggestions become recommendations to look more closely at the privacy issue. I, I believe, but I'm not certain, that under the general plan, we're, we're obligated to. And, and making sure that, you know, the externalities of construction in particular on the neighborhoods, that those, those effects are sufficiently mitig, there's a commitment to sufficiently mitigate those effects.
So those, those three recommendations then are consider looking at those for additional provisions, additional conditions prior to city council consideration?
Yes, please. Okay, thank you. So we have before us Thank you. It's three different recommended actions. And I think that we should take these, unless there's, unless everybody would like us to take these all simultaneously, we take these individually?
Through the chair, yes, if you take these individually.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's some preference being expressed? Is there disagreement about taking them individually or?
How do we eke in the conditions if we're taking them? Is it, are the conditions of approval broad amongst?
The motion on the entitlements.
Got it.
Will be
The master use permit, right?
Will be made subject to the conditions that Heather read into the record.
Thank you.
So we can consider them together and the conditions still attach?
Well, we have the conditions of approval. That'll be part of that master use permit, but then we have the recommendations, right? So the recommendations would be generally for all of them?
No, so you'll just make a resolution, the third resolution recommending master use permit and other entitlements. That recommendation will be made subject to the inclusion of the additional conditions of approval that Heather read into the record.
And, and considerations of the three recommendations. Because if, if we go forward with additional conditions to address those recommendations, it would also be in that.
In the master use permit.
That it's one resolution that has the use permit, the environmental design, the sign program.
Gotcha.
So we'll distribute them in the conditions associated with that.
Right, then I would like to issue the challenging request that somebody make a motion.
I'll go for it. I haven't done it in a long time.
It's all yours, Commissioner Sade.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution recommending city council verify the final environmental impact report. I said, did I read, say certify, verify? I'm reading, okay. Certify. Thank you. And then resolution two, resolution recommending city council approve the zoning amendment to establish the Northgate Town Square PD. And continued text. And resolution three, recommending the city council adopt resolution approving vesting tentative subdivision map, master use permit, environmental design review permit, and master sign permit for the Northgate Town Square. With the added conditions of approval that Heather read out as well as the recommendations that, right? Do you want her to read them?
No, no, just take one res, just take one resolution, like start 2407.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, start there and then we'll vote and then we'll go to the next one.
Okay.
That'll make it easier for her.
That'll make it easier. Okay. The resolutions aren't numbered here, so I'm going to have to look them up. Do you want to go for it? Do you have them? Okay. I'll, I'll hand it over, doll. I have them, I just don't have them pulled up.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve resolution identified in the staff report as 24-06. Resolution of the City of San Rafael Planning Commission recommending the city council certify an environmental impact report, making findings of fact to adopt a statement of overriding considerations and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Northgate Town Square pursuant to SEQA on APNs 17506012, 17506040, 5961, 06066, and 06067.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we?
With? We don't need to make those conditions yet.
Okay.
Do?
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Sade seconds. Roddy, my apologies, 11:15 at night.
Who the chair, would you prefer, roll call?
Would you please take the roll?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatelli?
Regrettably, no.
Commissioner Roddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
Chair Haidman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the second resolution?
Sure, I'll make a motion for resolution 24-07. A resolution of the City of San Rafael Planning Commission recommending the city council adopt a zoning amendment to establish the Northgate Town Square Plan Development, approve the Northgate Town Square Development Plan, and rezone the 44.76 acre Northgate Mall property from General Commercial to Northgate PD District, consistent with the San Rafael Municipal Code Chapter 14.07 and Section 14.27.060, to facilitate the phased redevelopment of the Northgate Mall into a mixed-use development inclusive of commercial, residential, and publicly accessible common space.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sade. Margaret, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatelli?
No.
Commissioner Roddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
Chair Haidman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Margaret. Do we have a motion on the third resolution?
I can actually do this. Okay. Pull it up. I'd like to make a motion to approve the environmental and design review conditions of approval ED 21-024. This is a resolution recommending city council adopt a resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map, master use permit, environmental and design review permit, and master sign program for the Northgate Town Square project, including with the condition, I guess, that the added, how do I say that? The added conditions of approval that staff has read off or included as well as the recommendations are passed on to city council.
I will make a, I'll second that motion with the clarification that the resolution number is 24-08 as in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners Sade and Mercado. Margaret, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatelli?
No.
Commissioner Roddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
Chair Haidman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Then next we move on to the director's report.
I have a very brief
Before we do that, let me, I was remiss in my earlier comments and not thanking staff, developers, and consultants for all of the hard work on this project. It has been a, it's, it's, it's on a very long road and all your efforts are much appreciated.
Great, thank you. I just have a really brief director's report and really that's the selection of the empty seat on the planning commission. So that has been that seat has been filled by city council by Danielle Leary. Danielle actually has a long background in local government. She actually held the position of Economic Development Director for the City of San Rafael. She currently is working for a larger-scale industrial developer, so has a deep background in both land use and community economic development. So, you know, I'm happy to announce that she's been appointed at that large seat. And she'll start, she'll be probably likely sworn in in November, available for planning commissions moving forward. So we are still after our alternatives, our alternate positions. So we're continuing the recruitment of that. It actually has been a little more challenging in the, the requirements of licensed architects for that. So that was one of the comments that we brought forward and we're like, yeah, we're going to fill this up. But it actually has been so much challenge to find that licensed architect provision. So it may open the window of reevaluating at some point, but this, we'll continue to work through this on recruitment. Okay, that concludes my director's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Do any of the planning commission members have any communications? Okay, then thank you all and this meeting is adjourned.